You have a quorum. Mary, would you please take the role?
I will. Mr. Howell.
Here.
Ms. Ackerman.
Here.
Mr. Dane.
Present.
And myself, Mary Hartman, here. I don't hear, I don't see Linda. I'm going to call out Linda Escobedo. Linda Escobedo, are you here? She's not here yet.
We have a quorum.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment either present in the room or online?
You have a hand raised.
Do. Yes, sir.
Brett Fay.
Hi, Brett Fay. I am resident at 149 Spencer Brook Road.
Can you hold for just a minute while we get the volume increased in the room so we can hear you better?
Sure.
Sorry about that. Always good to have somebody comment early so we can find out whether the tech is actually...
Can you hear me?
Barely. So, we're just waiting for the, for the volume control to up the... Okay, try now.
Hello? Good evening? Hello?
Try again.
Hello there? Good evening?
Much better.
There we go. Good, great.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Ready.
Hi, I'm Brett Fay. I live at 149 Spencer Brook Road. I'd like to make a comment on the residential tax exemption policy. I recently submitted an op-ed to the Concord Bridge and I won't read it this evening as it's available on the bridge's website. Since submitting my letter to the bridge, I've spoken with residents at my Concord Church Country Club and children's soccer teams. I've yet to hear or find a resident who either is aware of the new property tax policy or understands how it works. In fact, I've had more than one person tell me they threw away the pink sheet because they thought they would not qualify for tax relief. When I explained that they threw away up to $2,000 and then further the intent of the policies, what I've heard consternation. I spoke with the assessors' office earlier today. As of that time of my call, the assessors' office had received 3,050 applications. This is quite different than the 5,040 assumed successful applicants in the financial model the select board considered. Excuse me. I'd like to share a couple of observations. First, approving a final tax rate on November 20 will likely set up the town for either underfunding or overfunding the levy. And based on my listening to prior select board meetings on YouTube, either situation will be problematic and embarrassing to our select board. Second, if one were to assume the lack of response to the applications is similarly spread between lower value, excuse me, and higher valued homes, this policy will likely set up tax increases for many residents in lower valued homes, which is counter to the select board's objective. That would seem to be equally embarrassing. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? In the room or online? All right, then, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? I guess not. Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you. Town managers' report.
No, we have the committee appointments.
Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Committee appointments.
Move to appoint Joanne Crowell of 55 Woodland Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Move to appoint Bruce Button of 28 Fair Heaven Road to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee as a citizen-at-large for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Move to appoint Anne Mock of 199 Oak Hill Circle to the West Concord Cultural District Committee for an extended term to correct staggered terms, to correctly staggered terms amongst the committee to expire May 31, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
No, thank you. All right. Town managers' report.
Okay. Thank you. So, I have a few things here from the operational status reports from the weeks ending in October 27th and November 3rd, but as usual, we recommend that residents take a look on our website where we have every report, and you can take a look and see what people are up to. So, we had, on October 25th, the EPA hosted an information session regarding the NMI Starment site at 2229, the site meaning 2229 Main Street. The meeting was well-attended both in person and online. And the 2229 Advisory Task Force is holding a public forum on November 9th to review the charge of the committee, to outline considerations for possible reuse, and solicit ideas regarding the NMI Starment Superfund site. The task force is going to develop a recommendation to the select board in just under a year. So, this is a community forum, and that's going to be in the public hearing room. A delegation from Nani, Japan, came to Concord last week as part of the Nani-Concord Sister City program. The delegation and their host families came to the townhouse on Sunday to celebrate 25 years of partnership with a signing ceremony. I want to note that the police department has been assisting with a number of community events, including Concord Academy's Open House, West Concord Day, and security at Temple Karam Shalom. They have been out in the community helping out where requested. In Public Works, on October 26th, the operations personnel provided a tour of the Deaconess Water Treatment Facility to the senior class members of Minuteman's Environmental Science Program. The water supply industry is increasingly challenging with attracting the next generation of operators and technicians. And Concord Water has a long history of offering tours like this to surrounding schools to increase awareness and exposure to the important work that they do and talk about career opportunities For MBTA Communities, the planning board meeting on October 24th, the board reviewed the first draft map for the MBTA Communities overlay. The map shows five areas to potentially include in the district. The map is uploaded on the MBTA Communities webpage if people want to take a look, and it's also going to be discussed at upcoming planning board meetings. And there's also community connection hours that are set up this month at different places around town. So, if folks have questions and want to discuss the overlay or the draft overlay in a more casual setting, they can come speak with town staff at, you know, Club Car Cafe, at Dunkin' Donuts, or on Zoom. There's a few different dates listed on the MBTA webpage. During the month of October, Bonnie Wilber, our Community Services Coordinator, attended the Massachusetts Law Reform Institute advocacy training in assisting families experiencing homelessness. She also attended workshops, the housing crisis, and migrants in Massachusetts, and took part in a meeting sponsored by the Municipal Immigration Support Network, which hosted a speaker from Massachusetts Immigration and Refugee Advocacy Coalition. There's a COVID-19 vaccine clinic for residents 60 years of age, 60 and older, and that's scheduled for November 14th from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Harvey Wheeler. So, there's a phone number for folks to sign up that's in the report, and there are times, actually, I can tell you, residents 60-plus with last names beginning A through L are encouraged to arrive between 10 and 11, and those with last names beginning with M through N should arrive between 11 and noon. And my last update today is regarding Giraud Park. I wanted to update the board and anyone listening that plantings, for plantings and landscapes, most of the weeding, mowing, and removing heavy overgrowth is complete. Coal is looking for some trees to replace, some dead ones, in November, but most of the tree replacements will occur in the spring. For the pavilion, there's a new building subcontractor who's expected to start ordering needed materials and setting up staging beginning Monday, November 6th. So, I don't know if anyone saw that today. This work includes the ceiling, roofing, and trim. And for paving, a paving contract subcontractor has given November 17th as a start date for final paving, the walkways, driveway, and parking area. And that concludes my report this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just thought it would be nice to thank the town staff for the efforts that they made hosting the Nani visitors last week. I know it's a lot of effort, and I know it's very much appreciated by those visitors, especially the municipal relationships that we set up. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, it was a terrific event. And the students were present. Both our students and the students from Japan were here.
Yep.
And they all participated, and the general counsel, Japanese general counsel, was present, and I had the pleasure of sitting next to him, and he told me that they're actually, they have a, the general counsel's office in Boston has a staff of five, and there are 15,000 Japanese nationals in the greater Boston area, which is, was a surprising number to me.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, I think one of the students was a translator.
Yes, he was. Well, he was one of our students, worked as a translator. He was also running around adjusting the volume on the loudspeakers.
Yeah. Well, it's worth noting that Nani actually funds a position in their town government called Coordinator of International Relations. My son worked in that position for two years, and so they make a real investment. That's a job that's open to, typically, they look for a graduate of Concord Carlisle High School to take that on as they exit college, and it's an opportunity to live abroad and really experience Japanese culture at the ground level, and it's, that is the role that the person who came from Nani and being part of these exchange trips is part of that job. So, it's a great thing to aspire to if you happen to have an interest in that and you're a current student in Concord.
Maybe we should also see about having such a position here.
It'd be interesting.
For a student, actually. All right, so, my report is brief because most of the things I have to mention are things that will come up later in the meeting. I just want to mention that there will be a, the Natural Resources Commission will have a public hearing on Warner's Pond on November 8th that, that we already, I think we already mentioned the public forum for the 2229 Main Street. And then something for this board is that we are, we are, there is a joint meeting of the school committee, the finance committee, and the select board on capital planning next Tuesday, and we are expected to attend that.
Oh.
Are we?
Yes.
Yes, we are. And I did, was, and what brought it to my attention, I guess I should have been aware of it sooner, but I got an email from Tracy Morano saying if we are going to be present, we should notice it, and we should notice it early as a meeting of the board because of the holiday this weekend. It is, we need to do that on Thursday. So...
It will be at the school? Who hosts?
So, it came up, it came up at the senior management team meeting this morning, the need to post it and kind of organize. And so, I asked where it was last year, and it was at the Ripley School Building, and so that's an option, but...
The calendar, on the calendar, on the calendar, it shows it as being here, at the townhouse.
Yeah, I thought it was here last year.
We had three meetings last year, actually, and one was at Ripley and one was here, and I forget where the third one was. I think we put prefer it's here.
In the hearing room?
Yes.
Yeah. So, will you take?
I would prefer so.
Meg, will you take care of posting the notice?
Yes.
Okay.
But is there, is the agenda simply to discuss capital budget? Is there anything else we should add to that?
Can you find out from the FinCom? I mean, it's pretty much their show, isn't it?
I'm not sure.
Well, my impression, having been on the Capital Planning Task Force, and we've been through this a couple of years now, what we've done in the past is the town presents what our 10-year capital plan might be, and the school presents also, and the FinCom runs the meeting. But we have some handouts or PowerPoint, not a lot of them, but just the basics.
Others are working on this. Anthony's working on it, but I just, I am trying to, so don't think that we're not being prepared. We will be prepared. I just, the logistics of it, I want to make sure we're on the same page. So, we can do it in the hearing room, we'll notice it, and we'll, we'll send a draft agenda to you. We'll connect with FinCom.
That'd be good. And if anybody on the board has any thoughts about what should be on that agenda...
I believe it's more than, I think it's all three tiers of capital that we'll be looking at.
Right. That's new this year. The last times, we only did tier three, and I think we're doing all three tiers.
That's what Prashar was shooting for.
All right. And the finance committee has already posted it for this building, so...
Great. Good, good, thank you.
But they don't have an agenda out.
But they've, but that doesn't, that doesn't notice the select board, because we're going to have a forum.
We need to do that, too, but let's assume that we're going to use their agenda.
Okay, so, I think that pretty much takes care of the liaison reports, right?
No, that was the chair's report.
Chair's report.
That was the chair's report.
Okay, so, liaison reports.
Okay.
Okay.
Want me to go first?
Sure.
All right. So, picking up on the Natural Resources Commission and the Warner's Pond thing, I have, I attended, and I know some of you also did, too, a site tour that was sponsored by the Friends of Warner's Pond, also the Oars Meeting at the Neshoba Brook Bakery related to Warner's Pond and the impacts of dam removal, as well as the NRC meeting. And the NRC at their last meeting has stated that they're not planning to move an article for the, or bring an article for the 20, for this upcoming town meeting, but rather to commission a study task force that will, that they anticipate would work through 2024, making a recommendation for 2025. So, not to take anything away from the forum, which I think would bring anybody who's interested up, this is really a continuation of the work that's being done to try and decide what the right course of action is on Warner's Pond.
Mark, who would appoint people to that task force without...
The NRC is empowered to create their own subcommittees.
Are they?
Yeah.
So, they would...
So, they, it would be a task force of their group.
Okay. My only concern would be that, I know that the task force was strongly advocated by the group of people, and many of them have already signed a petition saying that they wanted to dredge and not, so I would just caution them to find people who are still open-minded, as opposed to have already decided what they think the solution is.
Okay.
And this forum, is that the November 8th forum?
The November 8th forum. So, that's also their meeting to have more dialogue about Warner's Pond and the current status and education. So, one of the recognitions is the current consultant that's working on Warner's Pond alternatives will probably not have their report ready until the February, March timeframe, which is pretty close to the upcoming town meeting and would require the NRC to actually create an article before they've really got the results of that work.
That's good news.
So, I think it's, it's good process to, to get that information and then look at it in some detail and then come back with a set of alternatives.
So, what is the purpose of this forum, then? If, it sounds like they've already decided they're going to form a subcommittee, and we don't know yet what the consultant and the subcommittee are going to recommend.
Well, it is in response to the fact that there are, I would call it a growing number of people who are becoming aware of the options that exist around Warner's Pond and the contemplation of dam removal versus dredging versus doing nothing. So, I think this is a continuation of the NRC's efforts to make sure that people understand what options are ultimately going to come before the town and what work is going on right now in order to flesh out those options. I'm going to skip the DEI Commission because they're here tonight, and we'll talk more about their work a little bit later. The Personnel Board is making progress on their, on the bylaw and charge. They're meeting this week as well on the, on the 8th, and the outlook for a dialogue with the select board over the Personnel Board charges is something that I'm anticipating will come up in December for us. CMS Building Committee, the middle school building project is continuing to make good progress. There's steel going up, there's beginnings of some concrete work, as I understand it, and that was well-reported in the bridge in the last week, I noticed. And the, I also attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail ribbon cutting, which was well-attended by our legislative delegations at all levels. It was really a very nice event with recognition of a lot of effort that's gone in over many, many years to get that done. And we also mentioned the Nani Sister City events, so that was, that was great.
So, just for the, for future planning, you say that the, we can expect to deal with a, an updated personnel bylaw at our, at a meeting in December?
Yeah, we'll, we'll see a draft of the bylaw recommendations, which they would be forming into an article for town meeting, but there's also work going on, on the Personnel Board charge, which is really an agreement between ourselves and the Personnel Board as to, you know, what they're, what they're doing on a more tactical basis.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go. Are you done, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, great. I went to two events relative to the Novo Riverside Commons Project. One was the ZBA hearing, and another was a sitewalk the next morning for the ZBA staff, the ZBA members. I will say that I'm impressed that the development team is, it's a deep development team, it's experienced. The only thing I was a little bit disappointed with was their traffic study seems very weak, and I'm hoping that we can afford to have our own traffic study done to kind of look, I think, deeper at the traffic impacts in that neighborhood. I think they minimized them. The other thing we learned during the sitewalk is that the developer is planning on changing the, the path that is planned to go in front of the buildings over to where the river is, and they're going to extend it another 220 feet so that it actually meets up with the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, that the town has been trying to get designed and then will fund for several years. So, that is, that was good news as far as making a continuous path, path between the West Concord Village all the way over to Baker Ave. So, that was something that the developer has changed. So, I think they're willing to work with us, and that was good news. Compare that to the Thoreau Development Sitewalk that we did someday last week with Mathis Housing, and I'll have to say, this development team does not look well-prepared. They had a lot of unanswered questions about the development. They weren't sure where the septic would be, they weren't sure where the stormwater management would be, so this is very much in the very early stages and seemed like an inexperienced development group. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, I also went to that ribbon cutting. That was great. It was very well-attended. I had to leave early because the giraffe toilets aren't working, but it was nice. It was, I was glad I went. The Concord's, okay, I, I mentioned a few weeks ago that I was going to try to incorporate the work of the Concord Center, Concord Center Cultural District Commission under the Economic Vitality Committee, and I was thinking of rewriting the charge for the Economic Vitality Committee, and I've rethought that because the Economic Vitality Committee right now is in flux. Their longtime chair, Jennifer Schindman, who's done a great job, for I think she's been there six or seven years, is stepping down. So, rather than do that, I'm thinking that it might be best if we simply asked the Concord Center Cultural District to become a task force, do the job for one more year while we think about what's the future of the Economic Vitality Committee, so...
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so, Mimi Graney, Mimi Graney and I are working on rewriting the charge for the temporary task force, and we hope to bring that to you at our next meeting.
And that's the one that's being formed for the purpose of accepting the grant?
Exactly. It will be to accept the grants and award the grants. So, we need somebody to do that this year, and the Economic Vitality Committee isn't the right place. And then I also went to the town meeting forum that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters, and the League of Women Voters is really doing a great job of getting some interesting forums going in town. That was well-attended, great conversation, and we'll talk more about that tonight when Carmen, Carmen's up on the agenda. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Carrie?
So, at the last meeting, I think Mary and Henry had questions on one of the things from my liaison report, which was the Hanscom Forum, and Paula is here tonight to answer any questions that I unfortunately could not answer about the December 6th Hanscom Forum. Paula, if you want to come up there, I don't know if you guys remember your questions, but I think you wanted to know who was sponsoring it and a little bit more about it?
Yeah.
And what it meant for us to become a sponsor of it.
Yes, yes. So, just to step back, I approached Mark and asked if the board might consider being a sponsor of this. It was intended to model something that Bedford has done, and I think, Teri, you mentioned that you had attended that forum. It's, it's an educational forum. So, the questions that you asked, I captured them, and I'll just try and answer the questions here. You know, who's the main organizer and who is the main sponsor of the event? And you just mentioned the League of Women Voters. They are the main sponsor right now of the event, and we would like, you know, more cosponsors in order to cast the net wider and get more attendance. Myself and Ray Constantine, who is on the Hanscom Committee, part of the Nurse Neck Hill Homeowners Association, along with the Save Our Heritage Organization, is, is working together to plan the event, and I actually have more, more people confirmed and a drafted agenda which I sent along. So, it's a panel format, there'll be three or four speakers. We have confirmed right now Neil Rasmussen, you saw some of the information at a previous select board meeting talking about climate impact. Senator Barrett is going to be attending this event and also talking about climate policy and the fact that, from a state perspective, we are behind in meeting our goals there and some of the actions that he's taking from a policy perspective. Then, we have Chuck Collins, who has, he's from the Institute for Policy Studies, and it's a Cambridge organization, and they were recently commissioned to do a study regarding flights in and out of Hanscom. What, you know, what are those flights actually that are going in and out of there? Because part of the proponents, you know, argument about this expansion is the fact that there's a lot of ferry flights in and out of there, and we would have a reduction in flights, so he has some very compelling information. And then, the, the ask that you had was, you know, what, what would the select board role be? Sponsorship mostly, being, again, trying to cast the net wider in terms of getting attendance. If we modeled it after the Bedford Forum, it would be great to have somebody from the select board, maybe Teri, because she wrote the letter, and in response to the ENF, if you can't, that's fine, but I was interested in having, you know, at least your endorsement of the meeting, and if somebody from the board... of the meeting, and if somebody from the Board wants to be on and talk a little bit about the town's response to the ENF, the letter, for example, the lawyer that was hired, it would be helpful for the town to hear that.
Good, thank you. We'll consider that part of, this part of Teri's liaison report augmented, and if it needs a formal approval by a vote of the Board, we will put it on the agenda for our next meeting, which will be prior to your meeting. But there's no reason that members of this Board should not, you know, show up and participate in any event.
Thank you.
Okay. And if any other Select Board member wants to speak, I may have conflict, and I may be arriving late, so I'm not sure. And I'm not sure if you need a Select Board person, you have a pretty good panel already. But anyway, I do recommend that we sponsor it. I know Bedford was one of the sponsors at their forum.
What's the date, Teri?
December 6th.
Which is a Wednesday.
Right, so Wednesday, right now it's scheduled for the Goodwin Forum in the library.
Great.
Okay, so a couple other things about my liaison report. I did go to the Novo zoning board meeting and a number of site walks that have already been mentioned, the Thoreau Club, Chapter 40B, the ribbon-cutting, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the canoe ride at Warner's Pond, and the Nanee signing ceremony, all really great events. And also, I went on a site walk of the 2229 Main Street. So I have the flyer here reminding everybody, as Megan mentioned, November 9th, this Thursday at 7:00 PM, we want to get great attendance for people to... The main purpose is for citizens to give input. What do you want to know about the site? What do you maybe want to use it for if we acquire it? What are your concerns, et cetera? So hopefully, we'll get good attendance November 9th.
One other thing I might mention is that on that second 40B project, the Forest Ridge one, I think our agenda this week has on it the cross-references to the documentation that we've received from the...
Oh, right.
Oh, we've got to write a letter.
Yep, that's right.
From the, what's it, the department, the funding agency?
Mass Housing.
Mass Housing, which is soliciting comments from us.
On November 27th.
With that deadline, and there's a link to the application that you can look at, and we'd be happy to receive comments from anybody on that application, and we will have our own comments that we will put together at our next meeting.
Good, great.
I think I agree with Mary that that was a, that application was somewhat more rudimentary.
Yes.
And appears to have been almost structured in order to get in under the wire because of the other pending application. And we've been kind of looking at the technicalities of dealing with those two applications at the same time, and what the possible results are. So...
Just a question on that. Megan, is there a deadline for town staff to have responded with comments?
Yes, so we were waiting to put our comments together until after the site visit, which just happened, and then we have a staff meeting on Wednesday, where we're going to review the project as a group. And so after that, we'll have our comments into the Board, prior to, well in advance of your November 20th meeting.
Great.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
Following up on Mary's comment about the Novo project and the traffic study, do we have the ability to obtain our own traffic study to review the impact on a more objective basis?
We have hired an outside traffic consultant as our peer review for this project, and they are finalizing their review of the applicant's traffic study. And our next step will be to have a meeting with our team and our traffic consultant and their traffic consultant and the applicant to kind of work through any major issues offline before it gets back to the hearing.
But are they just going to rely on the data that was obtained by the developer's traffic study?
I can't speak to the full scope of the peer review services, I can get back to you on that.
And who will be involved in that meeting with these traffic consultants? Will the, I assume, like the town engineer and yourself, and will maybe the Transportation Advisory Committee Chair or anybody like that be involved?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the plan is. I think we'll probably do an internal one first. I know that the zoning board of appeals is accepting public comments, of course, and traffic is the main issue, it seems like, from public hearings. So I expect that to be fully vetted throughout the hearing process, but if there are some kind of major concerns or discrepancies, which I don't know, between the report provided and the peer review, it's pretty typical to try to handle some of those issues, you know, offline first, instead of getting into the technical stuff at the hearing. So more to come on that.
Okay. Megan, can I, let me ask you a question. Does the traffic study take into account any reconfiguration of the intersection between Main and Baker or any of the redesigns around, or is it just the way things are on the ground right now?
Well, Main and Baker, they want to, the traffic study suggests moving the entrance, is it 30 feet to the...
No, that's on Baker.
That's the other intersection.
That's on Baker.
That's the one coming out of the parking lot onto Baker.
You're right. This is up the street, the intersection of Main Street and Baker. Because I know the DPW has that on its list, and I'm just wondering, does it include things like that, or...
Does the applicant's traffic study include that intersection?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if that was in that.
And related to that...
I think that's material.
Related to that, one of the big comments that the Traffic Advisory Committee had was, instead of having all that traffic from this new development go into West Concord, is there a way to get it directly onto Route 2, where they're trying to go? Why should they go all the way around through the center and then, you know? So I think that's, there's three possible intersections to look at, okay? Baker and Main, coming out of the parking lot onto Baker, and then a third possible one getting onto Route 2 directly.
Through the parking lot, through the main parking lot.
Yeah, instead of going through the village.
I don't think that they addressed that last...
No, I don't think, I don't think any of these have been fully addressed yet, but, yeah.
Okay. All right, are we ready to move, are we ready to move on to our next item?
I think so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
The next item is acceptance of grant from Commonwealth of Massachusetts Community Compact Best Practice Program.
That's Mimi Graney, our Economic Vitality Manager.
Hi. I applied for and received a grant, $40,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as part of their Commonwealth Compact, Community Compact Program, which is basically for the administration of towns and cities for following best practices. And so one of the best practice programs that we applied through was about advancing Concord as an age-friendly community. So the town had already enrolled as part of that, as part of a statewide initiative back in 2019, and was part of a study that was looking at housing. But COVID came, and basically no more activities came out of that. So with this grant, I'm proposing to do an age-friendly business initiative, so it would be looking at the neighborhood business districts of Concord Center, Thoreau Depot, and West Concord, to do an overview of like, what are the challenges for seniors being able to shop and to go to the restaurants? And then to work, create a toolkit for the businesses, and then do training, one-on-one assistance and a group training for the businesses. The idea would be, it would be in partnership with the Council on Aging and the Disabilities Commission, and some with the Economic Vitality Committee, and it would be about a one-year project to formally kick off in January. The funds would be used to pay for the consulting services of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
Great, thank you.
Any questions or comments on that?
Yes, are you going to get the chamber involved with this as well?
Yeah, I've sort of got a small working group. I'm wanting to work specifically with people with disabilities and with seniors as part of like our informed group, but the chamber, of course, would be...
Great, great, thank you, thank you.
I think an important issue with regard to being age-friendly has to include transportation.
The age-friendly initiatives are incredibly expansive, and it involves transportation and housing and roadway design, and it's a really comprehensive, I'm trying to bite off one little part of it to get us started, but I totally agree with you, transportation's a big issue.
I mean, I think if you want to make the business sections of Concord more accessible to older citizens, or visitors for that matter, of any age, there are two things that I think are really critical. One is improving the safety of crosswalks. Crosswalks have become, I think, reasonably dangerous and threatening to especially people who don't move that fast. And other communities have had, you know, much more intrusive kinds of crosswalk markers, like the one that we put in on, is Old Road, not Old Road, going out to a nine-acre corner at Powderdome Middle Road, we put one in there with push buttons and flashing lights and so on.
At Garfield? At Garfield Street?
Yeah, it was close to Garfield Road. And that type of, that type of crosswalk that would cause attention to the drivers, and that would make crosswalks much safer. I know we have some HTC issues with anything like that, anything that involves flashing lights, I know is something that's a problem. But when it comes to public safety, there is actually an exception to, I think, to the sign bylaw, to the sign bylaw that deals with signs that are for public safety. And then availability of parking, of course, because older people are less mobile, so availability of parking is important. And so, and I think that, I don't know how we provide more and more convenient parking, but that's an important issue as well. So, thank you.
Just one other comment. I couldn't help but notice that there was some direct information in this acceptance related to the really equity and inclusivity that's involved in ageism and disability. And I would encourage you to sort of stick around and hear what the DEI Commission is talking about doing, because I think that there's a real overlap here that could be exploited in terms of some of what they're doing, because really, this is just one of the populations of residents and visitors that we want to make sure are welcomed and are able to enjoy Concord equitably. So I'm encouraged about this, and I think it's actually has some good synergies with what's coming up next, so I'll encourage you to look for some ways to collaborate with that.
Mimi, I had a question about the business community. What is their reaction to this so far?
So some of the businesses they talked to are welcoming this kind of support, because some of it is recognizing that, typically, people in my sort of role in a town would do things like a retail best practices program and work with the retailers of like how to do more attractive displays. The Concord businesses basically could teach the workshops, they're really excellent already in that, but this is sort of a level of nuance that they might not be aware of. And I'm aware that Concord's got a challenge of being in historic buildings that aren't the most ADA accessible, and this is a way of being able to work with the businesses on how they can reach those customers, maybe in some creative ways that they haven't thought about. Things like being able to put a doorbell outside their business so that they could come out and meet their customers, or portable ramps, or thinking about making their display aisles a little wider. Some of the low-hanging fruit that don't require amending the physical property, but would help them do their business a little bit differently.
All right, so is this training on these workshops, are they going to be optional for the businesses?
Oh yeah, this would be totally optional. We're really looking at kind of creating a toolkit that would be ongoingly available. I'm still working out the exact scope of work, it might be like some video resources and print resources. In Boston, they've done like a little decal that the businesses would get, it was a way of like promoting businesses that are...
That's a good idea.
Specifically age-friendly as a way of highlighting them.
Great.
And this was actually inspired by an initiative that the Disability Commission had already started, where they were surveying the businesses. So I've been sort of looking at, where's there some momentum that I can help boost and we can partner together?
Oh, good, so you're working already with the Disability Commission?
Yep.
And the COA?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And the DEI Committee, whenever. I always like, as many partners as possible.
All right, thank you very much.
And I don't think that, well, we do have to vote, we do have to vote to accept the grant, so do you have a motion?
I do. Move to accept the grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Community Compact Best Practice Program, in the amount of $40,000.
Second?
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
All right. So turning to our next page, okay. The next item is to review and approve confirmatory deed for 10A Adewan Road.
Delia's just walked in. Good timing, Delia.
Good evening, Delia Kay, Natural Resources Director for the town, and I apologize for being late, I'd forgotten that your meeting was starting.
Oh, you're exactly in time.
Okay, perfect.
We're early.
Thank you.
We're early.
As you probably know from the packet, in 1947, the estate of Fannie Wheeler deeded three acres of land to the town. 1947 was prior to the establishment of the Natural Resources Commission, which was established in 1959, so it was deeded to the town to be kept as a park. And there was concern, there has been ongoing concern with the abutters that the land can be used for development, even though that was not the intention of the grantor. And so in 2001, the Select Board took a vote recognizing that the land was under the care and custody of the Natural Resources Commission. The Board, the Natural Resources Commission, is recognized under the Conservation Commission Act as being a legal entity that can hold real property interest. And so we're here tonight, the abutters have asked that this be recognized through a confirmatory deed, which would then be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and that affords the three-acre parcel permanent protection in accordance with Article 97, which is similar to all of our other conservation lands. It's just a more formal recognition than the 2001 Select Board vote. So the NRC has reviewed this and has accepted the deed, the confirmatory deed, and I'm here tonight on their behalf, seeking the Select Board's approval of that confirmatory deed.
I had some questions about the document itself, and that is, was that created by Town Council, reviewed by Town Council?
It was created by Town Council, yes.
It surprises me, because it's a deed from, actually, the NRC is not a separate legal entity from the town, and my understanding is that a deed from... And my understanding is that a deed from one entity to itself is not a valid deed. And so that a conveyance from the town to the NRC doesn't work. And I just wondered whether that was considered. And normally, a confirmatory deed is not given by the grantee of the original deed. It is given by the entity that originally conveyed the property to the town. And it's kind of treated like, almost as though it is a conservation restriction being placed on the land. And it, the reason I say that is because it gets, it is signed by the, the members of the NRC, which would be normally what would happen with a conservation restriction. And the deed itself says nothing at all about it being, the use being dedicated to a park. So I am a little confused and concerned about the document itself and whether it accomplishes what you expect it to accomplish. And I would like to, actually, before the Board signs it, I would like to have some of these issues reviewed by, with town council.
So town council did review that, your questions. And so a couple of things. A conservation restriction is, as you know, it's a legal document that's placed on either a public or private parcel, can be held by the Natural Resources Commission under the Conservation Commission Act, or it can be held by a land trust or other conservation organization. The Natural Resources Commission has the ability and, and signs actual deeds of conservation land. They are accepted by the NRC as deeds, as well as conservation restrictions under two different mechanisms, but the NRC has the authority to sign. There's a real property interest right?
But aren't they, at least generally, the town of Concord acting by and through its Natural Resources Commission?
Correct.
Not the Natural Resources Commission acting by itself, but only as, only as an agency of the town.
So this is a little bit of a unique situation because the original grantors are, this was from 1947, the original grantors are no longer with us. And so the deed that town council has prepared recognizes that it is an effective date of May 1, 1947, because we don't have the ability to go back to the original grantor. However, that was the intent and the...
Why, but the question is why, in fact, do we not actually make this a restriction instead of a deed? The town certainly can put the land under a conservation restriction, which would then be signed off by the Select Board and by the NRC, and would then be a statutory conservation restriction, which would be, could be permanent and would state what the, what the goal was. And there would be no question about the authority of the town to do that with this land. And it's much more simple and a straightforward solution, which I think is, you know, really works.
I think that you are going to have the same question of the authority of the town to convey a conservation restriction versus a deed.
No, it would be imposing it on land that it already owned.
But, but the, the town would be placing, would be, would be granting the CR to another town entity. So I think it's the same question.
All right. I, I don't want to make a big issue out of it. I just was concerned that there might have been a, from a real estate point of view, there might have been a better way to do it. But it really, it's not a big deal. The, that parcel of land is probably never going to be developed anyway.
That's the goal.
Can it be changed at all?
Can it be, can the deed be changed?
No, could the land be changed? Like, it's, it's just a field now and I assume we mow it, right? Could it have a pollinator garden or a community garden, or does it just have to stay open?
I don't, it, it could be something where a pollinator meadow is established there. I don't think it would be, I mean, we do have community gardens on some conservation parcels, but it's usually with the thought, as the land is acquired, that that is one of the uses that it would be. So since this was donated to be kept as a park, you know, I think it would be benches and those sorts of amenities.
I see, consistent with park. Okay.
I guess I have a question about why it's necessary to do this. It seems to me, I recognize that town staff time and committee time is being, and, and obviously some town council time is being consumed to assuage somebody's concern that the town might somehow decide to do something with a piece of land that, that they would object to. And I, I get a little concerned about the precedent that, you know, any particular property owner could essentially force us to start doing legal work to their, to their benefit in effect. I have to assume for, you know, when there's no particular reason to expect that we were ever going to do anything other than, than leave this land as it is. So can you help me understand why this is necessary in the next request for us to place additional restrictions on some piece of land that we, that we already control should, should not go through the same process?
So as you know, conservation parcels are municipal parcels, but they're looked at, they're protected differently than other municipal parcels because they have, you know, recreation parcels, water supply parcels, and conservation parcels are protected under Article 97 of the Constitution, which affords permanent protection. Cannot ever be anything other than its designated use. A municipal parcel can have a school built on it, a fire station, it can have municipal uses. And so the concern is that it was originally granted as being open and kept as a park. And the only way to ensure that that is captured in a legal format is to have that recorded in a deed at the registry. So the 2001 vote of the Select Board carries weight, but it doesn't carry legal weight. And I see that Tom Falwell, who is the attorney for the abutters, is on the call. And Tom, I don't know if you have anything additional that you'd like to add to Mark's question.
No, I think you summed it up, Delia. I think the question is, is the, the vote of the selectmen back in 2001 doesn't ensure that something, as you described, couldn't happen in, in just recognizing the, that the... The intent was, as established in the, in the letter that was found, that it was to be kept and open as, as park, as a park, which wanted the whole idea behind that was just to ensure that, to the best of our ability, that was memorialized, as you indicate, by, by the deed. Because the original deed did not recite that, even though that was the intent as shown by the letter that was, that they, that was, that was sent by the wheelers. So this is just, you know, just to ensure that it's, it remains that way. And the best way to do that is to, is to have it under the jurisdiction deeded to the Conservation Commission as opposed, Natural Resources Commission, excuse me, as opposed to just being in its custody and control for, which could be modified at a later date.
And I would add that, Mark, this is an unusual parcel. I mean, there are some small parcels of land and some large that are under Select Board control that, you know, if there was an initiative that the town was interested in pursuing to evaluate those and determine whether or not they should be conservation land versus municipal, that's something that, you know, that's, that's something that could be evaluated. But it, this is an unusual situation in that the original intent was that it be kept as open space. And so this is really trying to capture that.
And it's not really clear to me that that's, that is accomplished by this deed. So, I mean, I think before we actually sign it, I would really like to get those, the questions that I answered about its validity and the fact that it still does not even mention the, the intended use of the property. It just says, according to a, a vote of the town, such and such a date, which is really, I don't know why it is so oblique, rather than if the purpose is to say that it is to be currently held as a park, that the deed doesn't say that. So it's a lot of things that seem to be...
Town council did provide a comment, or town council did respond to the questions that you had asked earlier today. And with respect to the second point that you made, they are, a certified copy of the 2001 Select Board vote will be recorded along with this confirmatory deed so that there's not a confusion around what the purpose of the confirmatory deed is. And he also notes the commission's ability to hold real property interest in the name of the town.
It's not a question of whether they can hold it. Well, you know, if we want to have a, I don't, the Board will have to decide on whether they want to vote to sign, approve and sign this deed. But maybe we should have a conversation with town council offline before we make that decision. But I leave it up to the Board. I also do, I, 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 I agree with Mark's comment on this is, is the necessity of going through all of this time trouble and effort, effort and expense to accomplish what seems to be either to be very little or actually to accomplish nothing.
So I, I have read the comments from town council that were received today and they do seem, they, it does seem to be fairly clear that at least his advice is that, is that this is the most straightforward way to accomplish what's being accomplished. My, my question was, and I think it has been answered, that, you know, how do we make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a whole string of these? And, and the answer that, that I've now heard is that essentially the documentation predated or the intent was, was, was a long time ago and it wasn't implemented at that time. And that's, that's good because I think we open our door for a lot of kibitzing around adjacent properties if we, if we're not really clear about exactly why this is an exceptional But having said that, at least I feel like town council has in fact indicated that they are in agreement with this approach.
But Henry, you haven't seen that response?
I have not, no.
I have not either. I could go either way, but did it arrive late today or something?
About quarter to two from Megan.
Yeah, I got the questions last night and town council responded today and I sent it out this afternoon.
Do you, would you like me to read it?
I'm, I'm...
I don't think we should really, you know, spend our time here going through that in detail. If, if we have questions about it, there's no urgency about voting on it today. And so if, you know, if there are questions, we can deal with them offline and bring it up again in our next meeting if those items have been resolved.
I mean, I'm certainly comfortable waiting. I'm ready to move today, but I'm, I'm ready to vote today. I'm convinced that town council has given it a good review. I, I hear Delia's answers to the specific question. So I'm ready to move, but if the rest of the board isn't, then I can wait too.
Right.
What's the sense?
Let's wait a meeting.
Okay. We're going to wait a meeting.
Yeah, we'll give you a chance to, I mean, I think it makes sense, you know, I would certainly, I'm not a lawyer and you are, and so if you have concerns, I would defer to your, I would be much more comfortable if you were more comfortable.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
That is, all right. So now, next item is review and approve amendments to tour guide application.
Good evening, I'm Beth Williams, I'm the tourism manager. I provided you some information in the packet to give you some background on why I'm here. As you know, the tourist market has grown tremendously over the last several years and with that has been the increasing amount of people requesting to be tour guides. Shannon maintains our list of guide applicants and there's about 100 on there right now, of which about 25 report directly to me as town tour guides.
How many did you say?
There's 100 on the tour guide list. And I employ about 22. So the original tour guide, the original tour guide bylaw was written in 1905. So it's my recommendation that we take a look at that statute and see if we can update it to a little bit better reflect our needs today. Specifically, it really calls attention to how we solicit tourists by carriage. So of course, we don't, hopefully don't do that anymore. We certainly could. So it was my recommendation and was reviewed by town council to make it a little broader so that it does distinguish that tour guides are required to be licensed by the Select Board. And in order to do so, they have to follow our town guidelines. So I have drafted a recommendation that would go on the warrant for town meeting if you so approve or if you have questions. I know, Henry, you asked if town council had reviewed and Chris Carmody did send everything to them for the whole packet, for the waiver and for the bylaw amendment. But we can make, I know you had a comment about some changes. If we need to, we can certainly adjust those.
You, you understand what those, what they, what they were just?
I did, yes.
Yeah, so I think that's fine. We addressed those issues. That's good.
Fabulous.
Gives me a chance not to be cranky again.
I appreciate that. And the second part is really procedurally how we handle tour guides and how we license them. So background is that in order to become a tour guide, you have to currently pay a fee of $35 annually and have shown that you have taken and passed the tour guide class, which is run by the Concord Continuing Ed Department every year. What that leaves out is many of the processes town staff go through, such as quarry checks and backro, you know, background checks. And it also, the town staff that I employ are covered by the town's liability insurance and workman's comp, where independent tour guides are not covered as such. So we've made some changes that will help address that and give the town a little additional protection. The first change is that all applicants for tour guide licenses will have to be completed a quarry check that the town will take care of. Between Shannon and Chris Carmody, they're able to run those reports so they can take care of that when the applications come in. An additional, they will have to sign a waiver, which you have on the back of the application here, which town councils gave us to use as a general liability waiver. And then the last thing is that we have requested that they retake the Concord History Class every 10 years. This is something that Henry and I talked about last year and as a way for us to be able to constantly update the content of the course. Victor Curran is the current instructor and he does update it as we find new research, as new theories are proposed, myths proven, disproven. So it gives us a little bit more, Victor used a really good example for me, which was when he started teaching the course and he took over for Jane Gordon, they didn't talk about the Robin's House and its importance to the town history. So that's one reason we put the 10-year mark, is it seems feasible to be able to update the content of the course with any new information that's given. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I had two comments. One is on the suggested regulations, revisions, just I would go to Select Board instead of selectmen in, in the updated language, you know, to do that. And the other one was on the duration of the licenses. You mentioned that there's 100 or so that need to get processed all at once. And I was wondering whether it would be more straightforward for town staff to do a rolling licensing so that there was, instead of having to do a big batch all at once, did you give any consideration to that?
So we used to do them on a different time... So we used to do them on a different time schedule and we had, we moved them to a calendar year about two years ago to better line up with the tourist season. So most of the guides want to license, obviously work during peak season, which is April through October for most of the guides. We also feel that changing the regulations is going to help us actually weed out those that are not actually using their license. And we have also taken my town staff out of that equation so they will just be done as a batch, similar to what Victor does now with Shannon when people pass the course. I'll give her a list of my current employees and they'll, so that's 2025 of them right there. So it should be hopefully less of a burden and we, with Shannon's expertise, we have now put it online to permadeize so that, I, I hope Shannon, you can speak if it will hopefully reduce your burden.
But if somebody shows up in May and they want to become a licensed tour guide, they can just put in the application and it's only good through the end of the year? And then they end up in a batch?
Yes.
Okay.
The course actually doesn't finish until, it starts in February, it ends in May. So there is a small batch that renews then after they've completed the course.
Anything else? Okay, good.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
We do. Move to approve the amendments to the tour guide application as included in the Select Board meeting packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And Mary Hartman, aye.
Okay, next item is Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission Update in 2023-24 Action Plan with Progress on Specific Tasks. Joe?
Good night, everyone. Our areas of focus for the upcoming year encompass two things.
Well, let me just mention the fact that the, the materials that were provided, which is the, the slides are in, in the, in the meeting package. So we've seen all of those slides.
We're not doing slides.
Yeah.
Not doing slides.
Yeah, but, but we, but we have, we have them and we have the content of them.
Yes, great, thank you.
So you can just go, go, you know, give us the discussion.
Andrea, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Andrea Fonsevera and I'm the co-chair of the DEI Commission together with Joe. Okay, and I live at 41 Commonwealth Avenue.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. So I just, real quickly, I, I just want to talk about what our two focuses are for this year. It's going to be the LGBTQ and BIPOC communities within our town. Just for your reference, BIPOC stands for Black, Indigenous and People of Color. And LGBTQ is an acronym that represents a diverse range of sexual orientations and gender identities. And I just want to say something else before I pass the word to Joe. For your reference, both the LGBTQ and BIPOC identities are aspects that span a person's entire life cycle. So we won't be focusing on like a specific group. These identities usually, they start at childhood and, and, you know, in, when you're, they go through school, work, community. So all the activities that we chose to do during the whole year, which Joe is going to talk about, you will see that they're really very integral to the town and the different activities that everybody does in town. So, Joe.
Andrea, I mentioned, the reason why we chose these focus areas were directly related to trying to focus on a couple of things and doing it well. We had a lot of great support from the town manager's office and a consultant that helped us really narrow down and doing a few things well this year. And both these groups are groups that aren't really served specifically by any other large commission, where there's a disability commission, there's a council of aging, but these are groups that we felt were, could really use some of our attention. And remember, ultimately, our goal is to make Concord as welcoming a community as possible. So these activities that we discussed here briefly are all related to trying to be specific about making Concord more welcoming. So we've created nice little icons so you can follow us easily. So Chamber Commerce, Andrea's taken the lead on this to really develop a training program for, I'd say shop employees. So that people in the, very similar to what Mimi was talking about, the ability to get an overview and really understand these issues about how to make sure your shop or your, your, your retail establishment welcoming and inclusive. A little course you take, you receive a badge, you can put it in your window. So the goal would be by the spring of this year, we've got something running through the chamber. And there's, and Andrea's been working with them and they're quite interested in that. So that we'll be seeing store shops in Concord saying, we're a welcoming business, come in, we've earned the badge. And that's where there's a real connection here with what, with what Mimi's doing.
I did manage to add something. And also with that, our role is to guarantee the sustainability of the, you know, make it a little bit more permanent, maybe next year, 2025, do it again. And so you have a 2024 batch, 2025 batch, and that's a thing that all the shops and stores can engage with and also the community.
Under public safety, we've worked to develop an ongoing relationship with the chief and whoever he is sort of next in line that he brings to the meetings, a subgroup of our team, Kristen and Jimmy and Rose, meeting with them on a regular basis to develop a relationship of how we can be supportive of their work. And I think they've already reached out and talking to you, Andrea, about providing some training, specifically in-house training, that we would help with, that we are providing, that I'm, Andrea, if you know, has, you know, great experience at doing this work. So you've got this kind of a awesome free resource. And I think that's a nice growth out of the relationship with public safety. Also, the common conversation from last year related to how we handle incidents of bias in the town, talking to the public safety and thinking about that with them is part of what that chunk of work is. After this next one, I'll stop and we'll take some questions. Anything else on public safety you want to mention? Okay. Town government is just to remind ourselves that our relationship with the, all town staff has been really excellent. We, Donna and Carrie and Andrea and I meet on a monthly basis. We go through all these things. We've been incredibly supportive for all the town staff, Megan included, really helping us get this work done. Specific things we're working on with the town manager's office dealing with the follow-up to the eventual hiring of a DEI director. Andrea and other members of the team have been working on developing some recommendations and best practices about what other communities are doing in relation to hiring a DI director. We're doing some work with being involved in the hiring process when the time comes, having at least one or two members of the commission involved in that hiring process. Also, the, I'll check on this one and making sure that, and I can't read my own notes. Just that, oh yeah, resources to the town staff because more than once Carrie's reached out to us and said, hey, we need some help with, give us some background on what do you think about? So I just think compared to last year, we've been able to really grow in our relationship with the town manager.
Yes.
I'm going to stop here. Any questions on these first four before we go on to the last two?
Yeah, so did I hear you correctly, Joe, that you and some other people have experienced running trainings? And you're going to be providing the trainings to the public safety officers?
Two, two, two pieces of it. Andrea is deeply experienced in this and she's working with the chamber to develop their training packet. When they were talking about it randomly, a public, a public safety conversation, they said, hey, when you develop that, that might be something we're interested in as well. So that would also be done in-house for at least the first something simple from us. So there's other people they know.
So you guys are going to develop a class or, or a booklet or?
So the, specifically for the public safety, we're thinking of a couple of sessions. The police chief actually asked for two sessions, two distinct ones, one for the leadership and the, and the other one for the whole team. So that is probably going to be in person. And then the, the chamber one, that's probably going to be online.
It's going to be online?
Yes.
Yeah.
You mean like a Zoom webinar or like people click on links at their, on their, at their own pace or something?
Yes, it's going to be a combination. We are thinking of, of having, you know, the second, developing actual videos that are very personalized to the town and that address the specific things that we want to do. And also maybe have a session to talk about, you know, and to have questions and answer them because these type of issues or just, you know, the content is, I think people get very enthusiastic and we have lots of questions too. And it's okay to have questions and to feel, you know, safe asking them and discussing them in person. So we're thinking of including a session with, you know, like with a date on it so that people can plan and attend it. Not, not, I don't think it's going to be a requirement, but it's going to be optional.
So you're talking about, you said developing videos?
Yeah.
So you have a resource that you can work with, with the MMN if you want to?
Yes, exactly.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think you can see why when we were talking about the grant from the state for enabling particularly businesses to better serve the aged seniors and disabled people, that this is really a version of that and an extension of that and could logically potentially be delivered together or as, as different modules of a sort of a broader initiative around welcoming, which is very much in line with what the DEI commission is, is trying to do. What, by focusing on a couple of specific groups, it's not excluding other, other aspects of humans that we might want to also consider.
I have a question about, when you were talking about your relationship with town government and how they're actually, it's a very good working relationship and they're depending upon you and consulting with you.
Depending upon them as well.
I know, it's, it's mutual. Is that true with your work in the schools as well? How is, how do you interact with the schools, if at all?
I mean, I, we've met, the schools are an entity amongst themselves. They have their own agenda and their work. And actually, in many ways, they're far ahead of the town. In fact, they, they have a DEI director and that they have DEI trainings for staff and students. And there's a representative of the school committee that is our, Tracy is our connection and she comes to our meetings. And our goal is to, we've, whenever we've asked for help from them, they're always more than happy to share their resources. But really, I think we're, we're playing catch-up and really we don't have a lot of work to do around the schools. We're kind of focused more on the town, I'd say.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is there a, is there a cost and a budget involved in these activities?
The DEI commission has a budget that was authorized by the town manager for the beginning of the year of $75,000. Up to now, we've not spent any of that money. So far, everything we've done is done through volunteer effort.
And do, I'm sure you've thought about how you can measure the, how effective these various programs are.
Certainly.
That's part of the, part of the project is a, a metric of activity and success and-
We were really lucky last year that we had a survey, that we've got some baseline data now so that we'll be able to actually measure against something in addition to people, did I like the program? Was the session good?
Yeah, but specifically the online training course has, it has an impact evaluation, like before and after, and also a satisfaction, you know, like one. And we will have the survey so that we can run it again.
So I, I hope that you, we plan to have you come back and talk to us.
We're not done yet.
I mean, but when you are done, when you are done, that we, part of the, part of the program is that you update us again a year from now and see where we stand on-
Our charge says every six months.
Six months is okay.
Yeah.
Although that may be our busy season, like just before town meeting, but the idea is good.
So I'd like to, we'd like to focus on these last two items of the areas we're working on. Another subgroup of our committee is working on Concord Pride, Pride in Concord Pride 2024. The idea being that really Concord's never had any celebration of pride in any way, shape or form. So we're going to try to put something together for this year. And there's sort of two components to it. One is a history component. You know, that we say the, the root to people's, that's the root to people's stomach, their attention is through their stomach. I think the root in Concord is through history. And so Rob's very clear in the committee, let's work on some history because that's what will get people engaged. So in our sort of group of volunteers are helping us do some research into the history of these, the LGBTQ plus IA history that exists in Concord and the people we know in Concord and the history that may or may not be totally uncovered. So that's one area we're working on and we think that would be engaging to a lot of people in town. And then more specifically, just a good old festival in, in June of this year, somehow tying Juneteenth and the Pride Month together. And that's been so interesting because there's many groups in town have come to us and said, we're already planning this. Or Tricon and others have come to us. So that, that group's just beginning, but there's going to be a nice product coming out of it this year. Or definitely, I'm sure we'll hear more about it as we get closer to June. And then finally, on climate and culture, this is a very broad one and this is talking about how we make Concord welcoming to people when they come and whether they work here or they live here, but specifically when they visit here. What is our, what's the cultural markers determining climate? If I go into a place and I never see a picture of anyone that looks like me or no one is asking to try my language or no one acknowledges me, I tend to feel less comfortable in a situation. And that's true, as you all know, in a community as well. So some of the things we've done around climate and culture have been really concrete activities like the Ellen Garrison Day or the George Washington Dugan as a way to create events that celebrate people of color. That's a specific thing. It can be the Juneteenth example. That was another example where for the first time with Henry's assistance, we were able to raise the Juneteenth flag over the town. Thus, a person of color coming through that town, our town that day sees that, that gives them a nod like, oh, actually, I might be welcomed here. The, that's talking about Patriots of Color for the first time ever at the Old North Bridge on April 19th. That was a concrete intentional example to try to make people feel more welcoming in town. I don't know if G is on the line, but one of our colleagues, G on the team, we're working on creating a cultural calendar so that we can send out in June this year, a calendar for, sorry, in January this year, a calendar to everyone in town of, hey, here's, you know, about 14 cultural events you might not know about in addition to, you know, Christmas and Thanksgiving that are things you should know about and celebrate because there's people in town celebrating them. And now you know why your neighbor has lights up this week. You know, finding those kind of things out. The, go ahead.
Language, maybe, Joe? We learned about the second most spoken language. The second most spoken language in Concord is German. And the third, Spanish. So maybe having some communications in those two languages, like the, you know, the formal communications, so include that maybe.
So even walking in this building, we've talked to Carrie more than once about-
So one of the things that we can do on that score, which would be if we can get something put together for our, our historical monuments with QR codes on the monuments that will allow people to have the story of these, of these specific sites and monuments, and that could be in multiple languages. And it would be just as easy to have that available to anybody like online.
Absolutely. And one of the things, we worked with Beth this year. I, I don't know if you know, but the entire town map was redone this year, both to reflect more authentic stories and people of color specifically, but also you've translated it into how many languages?
Six.
There are six language translations of the town historic map. You just go online, you just click it, you can get a translated map. So absolutely, and that's the kind of stuff we're working on because we're all friends and we're working together, right? To get stuff done. I think the one thing, I'm glad you mentioned historic markers because that's really a, a place of great difficulty in our town. You may not know this, but you cannot- You may not know this, but you cannot, if you are a person of color, you will not find a monument marker, picture, stone, person, anywhere, in any public building in the town that represents you. So one of the things we're working on is how do we get some more authentic signage so that when people come into town and they go walk around a few historic sites, they see themselves? So that's something we need to work on. We've been in contact with our Historic District Commission. We certainly make contacts all over, but that's a lot of work that's going to happen in the years ahead and that's going to cost some of the budget. But the kind of flip of that is the problematic signs. We have problematic signs in this town that are actively working against a feeling of welcoming. We were supposed to have on the agenda tonight a discussion of the three problematic signs that we've been working on trying to get down. And I thought it would be important that you just know the context for that. These didn't come out of nowhere. We didn't just last Thursday decide to talk about the three problematic signs. I think the first time was in January. Nancy and I and the Historic Commission, I'm not a member, I just came to them in January of last year and said, hey, we've got these three difficult signs about indigenous history that are inaccurate and indigenous people tell us are offensive. And they were very kind to us. They said, okay, we'll start working on it. So Nancy, for nine months, has been working on her report about the difficulty in these signs and what's going on in the parts of the state. Her and I worked together several times, we tried to get it done. And they brought it to the Historic Commission in September. Historic Commission in September, after nine months, decided to think about it a little more. DI Commission said, well, we'll help them. We sent a letter of support, hoping they would bring it to you. At their October meeting, we connected ahead of time. They said, yeah, we're going to, we're going to vote. Simultaneously, in October, a random visitor came into Beth's office and complained about, it's offensive to me to come into your town. You have these signs up, how can they be up? Beth communicated that to the town manager's office. The town manager began to work with Historic Commission, the DI Commission, to put that on the agenda for tonight.
We're working on it.
I was, yeah.
We're working on it.
But it was taken down. It was taken off the agenda for tonight. So can I finish my sentence? Can I finish my sentence and I'll let you talk, I'm sorry.
We're working on it and, you know, and we're trying to get, we're trying to deal with a more comprehensive and inclusive kind of resolution to problems of this kind that will reflect a broad range of views and also be historically accurate and to do it right the first time.
Yeah.
And so it's something that is, is going to take some attention and going to take some input from a variety of sources.
Appreciate that, but we would say that's what our, one of our jobs is to push you. It's our job as the.
You're doing it.
I know. It's our job as the DI Commission to talk about these things. There has been a lot of work done, there's a lot of work done on the history. We didn't make this stuff up, you know? There's indigenous scholars who've told us these things need to come down. They're offensive. And I guarantee you, if we had a sign in town today across the street that said enslavement taught many people good skills that they use later in life, if we had a sign like that up, we'd be taking that down by tomorrow morning. But for some reason, these indigenous signs, we feel like we can take nine months and now we can take more time to do it right. Can I finish my sentence? So we want to push this fast. And we're happy to work with you on it, but it was taken off the agenda and it wasn't put on another agenda, so we're sort of lost. We don't know what's about to happen next.
Okay, we've been in touch about this in detail.
Well, actually, no, you've told me.
But we haven't been included.
Not with me. No one checked with us, no one asked us.
And we haven't been included.
Right. I think that the, at this stage of the game, with respect to the Tersentenian signs, there's good reason to believe that they represent an ongoing harm to, and certainly an offense to people visiting our community. And I believe that we should be taking some action to at least mitigate, triage that issue immediately. So my suggestion is that we ask the town manager to cover the signs while we think about it. I think that when we do that, we will create an opportunity for even additional conversation around these particular issues. By letting the status quo exist, we are tacitly accepting the, these narratives and frankly, they're almost slurs in some of the language that's on these signs. And so I think that we really do need to move with some haste to mitigate that and stop displaying the signs. The question about what sort of, what should replace them? How that, what the appropriate disposition of the signs is, is a bigger question and needs some effort to do it. But I think that right now, we should remove the harm and then work on that rather than let the harm continue to exist while we try to decide what to do.
But that's not even the recommendation of the Historical Commission on this. And so I think.
It's not true, the Historical Commission recommends they be taken down.
No, it's not, but we were.
Did they not say that?
This was not a subject that we were going to debate tonight, so.
It's part of our, it's part of our agenda.
So I'd like to, I would like to make a motion here. I would like to move that the Select Board request the town manager direct that the three Tersentenian Commission signs be covered as soon as possible and until a permanent disposition for these signs can be determined. And further, that the Select Board asks the Historic Commission, working with the DEI Commission, to jointly research and propose an appropriate disposition for these signs. The disposition could include removal, replacement with more accurate, relevant content or incorporation into an appropriate educational exhibit at the same or other locations.
I'll second.
I think this is a good idea. There's somebody in the audience who wants to speak.
Hi, I'm Nancy Frisella Lee. I'm a member of the Historical Commission. And I didn't know that you were going to address this tonight. I just found out, so I'm, I want to weigh in because I have been working on this since January 12.
Well, you're right, we weren't going to address it tonight.
Okay, I know, I know.
Which is why I'm not sure that this motion is in order.
I know.
Well, it was on the agenda, isn't it?
I know.
It was not on the agenda.
Okay.
And so, but if you want to speak.
I would like to.
As long as the motion is on the floor, please do.
Okay, I hope I have another opportunity to speak. I hope we all have another opportunity to speak about this. But even when it was proposed on the agenda originally, I was not informed about the meeting. And I've been working very hard on this for, since January 12th. So it's now nine months and counting. And when I say hard, I mean, I've been writing for hours and hours. And I have a 40-page report that is in draft. I've gone to lots of forums, not lots, but several forums, including one just a few days ago at Harvard that was extremely intense, that directly touched on some of these issues. I have prepared a full bibliography. What I want you to know as you're going forward in discussing this is that this issue is complex. The issues that are embodied in the signs are complex. When I first looked at the signs myself, I'm an art historian. I've done lots of academic research and I didn't understand them. Native American history is not my specialty. And so if I couldn't understand them just going and reading them, I doubt many people can unless they're specialists. So it does require a lot of thought, more than just a few minutes. And I prepared my report as a guide for people to decide. And again, I just want to say, I'm not an expert. So my report is heavily documented with sources so that you can go and check them yourselves. I know who the people who are the experts on the Tersentenian signs are. On Thursday, when I was at this colloquium, I made contact with some Native American people who are leaders in the community, in the local community, actually. And I'm trying to get them to respond and read my reports because I want to make sure it's accurate. This is a sensitive issue and I don't want to presume that I'm the expert on it. But I have learned a lot. So I hope that you will include me on any discussions that you have. And I want to be fully engaged in this because I have, I was asked by the Commission to do this work and I expect to be, I would like to be included in the discussions.
I think that your report is something that should be available to us and that we should consider it before we take any action. I've also been advised by historians that we should not take any action before we consult Native American consultants on the subject. And so I think that still for us, without having all of the information in front of us and particularly because this involves not just these signs and the specific things on these signs, but involves also consideration of how we are going to deal with evolving norms and evolving historical information that is becoming available to us as time goes on. And particularly with regard to the terminology that refers to various people. We know that that's a very fluid situation. All the terminology has changed in the last 10 years several times as to what is acceptable.
Henry, I've been working on this for nine months, I'm well aware of these issues. Probably spend more time than you have on them.
I'm sure you have, but this is something that.
But.
This is something, number one, that, that I think that either we should have in front of us before we make a decision and take any action or we should designate a committee or a subcommittee to advise us on the technical and linguistic and social issues involved here.
Would you be willing to read my report at least? Because you haven't read my 40-page report. And you can sit down and talk to me, we can schedule a meeting. I know from my experience of my meetings, our public meetings with the Historical Commission, people don't, those people have not, even the people on the committee have not fully engaged with the issues as I have. So you're right, we do need to bring in expert consultants, but I'm becoming one of them. And the signs are immediately offensive. At the, I don't know, can I just tell you about the tops of the markers? On the tops of every marker is the state coat of arms. And there is a commission in Boston that has been working for a few years to change that because it is blatantly offensive towards Native Americans. It's a severed arm wielding a sword over the head of a Native American man standing at peace at a restful stance. So even if you don't know anything about the signs or what the complex messaging in the signs, you can just look at that. A child, a school student can look at that and say, why is someone wielding a sign over a Native American, a stereotyped Native American? So every day, all of these signs, not all of them around the state, are offensive. But by that imagery alone, they are offensive. And so, and we are, on November 23rd, I think, the committee is going, the committee has voted to change it. They just haven't come up with a design. So on November 23rd, 21st or 23rd, I forget the date, I hope they make a proposal because that will make my job easier. I can fill that part in my report that they're going to. And then the signs will all be outdated anyway. So that alone, standing that there alone, makes them offensive. So we shouldn't wait. It's like Joe said, made the analogy, if we all saw something that was blatantly racist towards African Americans, we would take it down tomorrow. We wouldn't let it sit there and wait for a black person to come and tell us that was racist, right? We wouldn't wait, we would just do it. We're living in a very controversial, very, you know, moving times. And so why would we do the same thing to Native Americans who live in our midst, who are members? They, I've gone to public forums, you don't, you can, you should take my word for it because I've gone. They have said that, they just don't have time to come before you. We will get that if you want to hear that, but we don't need that. We can be their allies and we can, we can, we should take the step now and then take the time to make the decisions about what to replace them with.
Henry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is about Mark's motion. So as I see it, it seems like there's a lot of thought that needs to go into this. It's complex. We want to take a look at Nancy's report, et cetera. But in the meantime, what would be the harm in taking up Mark's motion of covering this up while we do all that research and think it through?
Exactly.
Like I said, voting on this was not on the agenda. People who had other points of view about this issue did not have the opportunity to come and speak about it. There is other information that ought to be in front of us before we make a decision.
Other information needs to be in front of you.
Just a minute, Joe.
Please. And, and those signs have been there for 100 years. And whatever harm has been done is not going to be materially changed by having us make an informed decision about what to do.
Well, Henry, first of all, it was on the agenda, right?
No, it wasn't on the agenda.
Well, it was on the agenda.
No, it was.
It was on, it was. Well, we talked about it at a meeting here, asking for it to be on the agenda.
The agenda was.
It was not on the agenda because I asked the proponents to give us a more comprehensive examination of the issues that we were going to discuss so we would have the necessary information, including alternatives, before us, before we considered this and took a vote on it.
And the way I interpret.
I spent a lot of time and was very thorough in outlining how the approach that I thought ought to be taken to this, which was not a negative approach. It was one that said, if we're going to decide something as important as this, which is very important because it involves not only the cultural and social issues, but involves accurately understanding and interpreting the history, which is of our town, our most, our greatest asset, really, our most important characteristic of this town is its history. That is what gives us the place that we have in the world today.
Right, so I think we agree.
I think we need to be responsible about responding to historical issues and also with regard to.
I think we are.
Treatment and terminology, it's a constantly evolving thing.
Right, right, so we agree with all that.
We agree with that.
So if someone, if someone made a motion to take the signs down right now, I don't think we're ready to do that now. We want to think it through really carefully, but can we cover them up while we put the thought into this, while we read Nancy's report, we get your other point of view?
Exactly.
It amounts, it amounts to the same thing, I think.
I disagree with that. It does not amount to the same thing. Other communities have already begun to address their signs through different methods. Some removal, some have augmented the signs with other information, which I consider to be fine print and rather than, rather than actually addressing the messages. These signs were specifically designed to be able to be read from a moving vehicle as you go past. And the fact remains that every day, somebody's out there taking a picture with these signs and really promulgating that off into the future almost forever. I think that by covering the signs, we actually will create an environment where the dialogue will be enhanced around what these signs mean? What are the, what is the actual place that's being commemorated or called attention to? And what is the message of that place? And how did we come to this point? So I think it's a signal that there's a time, that the time for that conversation has arrived and we're looking to have it when we cover these signs.
You do have a public comment if you want to take it.
Yeah, that's Kristen Haggerty. She's a member of the DEI Commission and I would invite her.
Yeah, sure. Please. Hi, this is Kristen Haggerty, 95 Revolutionary Road. And as Mark mentioned, I am on the DEI Commission. And I wanted to, you know, thank the other members for presenting so initially concisely and really, Mark, you made a lot of the points I was going to make, so I won't, I won't belabor them. But what I would say, kind of in the larger picture, is that the conversations that we're having that are uncomfortable are exactly the kinds of conversations we have to have. And as Concord, you know, if our, if our greatest asset is our history, I think we need to use that by, you know, showing that regardless of our history, we're able to make changes based on accurate information of what we know now and what we want our future to be. So, you know, I appreciate that this discussion is being had in the public. And I do believe that, you know, an example, you know, with a sign where we get to bring more. that, you know, an example, you know, with the sign, where we get to bring more people into that conversation so that more people can learn, like I said, you know, I said, people are going to want to know why these are offensive. That's a great conversation to have.
Right.
And that doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, they're going to disagree, but this is an opportunity to help people to ask questions that they didn't even know they had. So thank you to the chairs for presenting the action report, and it's been a great conversation to listen to among the select board as well. And I encourage you all to really take those courageous and bold steps rather than acting perhaps out of conservatism. If, if there's things that we can do to stop harm immediately and they're brought to our attention, we appreciate the leadership of this board. Thank you.
Can I give just some context that I've just learned a few days ago, that I think might be just helpful in your thinking? I have realized very late in the game, because I've spent a lot of hours on this, you know, every sign, every state has these signs, every state. I've just come back today from Vermont. They are everywhere along the road sides in Vermont. Then I've learned the history. The first markers that are cast iron markers along the road sides were put up in Virginia in 1927. The program was started, and it was because it was the, when, in the era of the development of motoring and tourism. And Massachusetts may have been the second state to start, and this, these are all from 1930 when we were celebrating the founding of the Massachusetts Bay Colony. Unlike Virginia, though, Massachusetts, we just did this in one year. We put up 275 signs in just one year, whereas Virginia now has 2,500 signs, and there, it's an ongoing program. As more history happens, they respond, people apply, and they put their signs up. In Pennsylvania, which is where I'm from, they also have these signs, and it's also an ongoing program. They just weren't made in one year, in a hundred years ago. And now that, the Pennsylvania Historical Commission is looking at all the signs, and they have actually removed some of theirs because, for this very reason that we're talking about, because they, they know that they're inappropriate. So they changed them. So we don't really need to investigate this anymore. We already know that. We already know they're problematic. They are historical. Some people like them because they're historical objects, but they're not works of art, and they're supposed, their intention is to convey educational information, and they're no longer educational. In fact, they're offensive. And I, you know, say in my report that the most valuable thing about taking these signs down, or I love the idea of putting a cover on, is opening up the dialogue. The signs, they're just three signs. They're just objects. But the important thing is, is that we start recognizing this history and that we find places in Concord. Concord is 388 years old, the colonial town of Concord, but Native Americans lived here for over 10,000 years. We have nothing about them here.
Why have inaccurate information?
I would like to say something about the identity of Concord that you brought up, Henry. I, I think it is important to acknowledge, you know, that maybe back then, 100 years ago, as a town, we needed that, that type of information, because that's what we wanted or needed at the time. I, I believe, as you said, we change, norms change. They change sometimes, I mean, with the diversity, like every other month. And, and I, I do want to say that I think as a community, what do we want from Concord today? Who are we? I, I think it is very brave, and I agree with everybody, to not only say, you know, our community today might not need what we needed 100 years ago. Today, we can acknowledge we might, you know, be wrong. We might be offending somebody, and, and we can talk about it. And also just change the narrative, not, I don't know the science, actually, but I, but I relate to, you know, history. I love history, and I relate to Concord and to everything it has. And it's not about, you know, deleting any of it, but maybe acknowledging new needs of the, of the population that we are today.
I want to thank the DEI Commission for bringing up this issue, and I really agree that the most important thing is, maybe the most important reason I even like the idea of covering the signs is to start that dialogue. You know, I'm, I'm just thinking if it was, you know, on, in the newspaper, there's a, there's a photo of the sign covered, and now everybody's saying, well, what's this all about? And that we try to figure it out together, as Andrea just said, what do we want to do as a community now? So we don't have to solve it all right now.
Right, get started.
Yeah.
Wait, can I make a last comment before you vote, or are you still talking?
Well, I, yeah, I suggest that we, we have a motion and a second. I think we should take a vote on it.
Any further discussion?
I'm ready.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
I am going to vote no, and I want to explain why I'm doing it. And that is because I think that all sides of this issue ought to be heard before we make a decision, and we ought to take advantage of the resources and information that will be provided to us before we decide on how to respond to this. So I am voting no, not because I'm necessarily opposed to this, but I think we are not being deliberate, and we are not, and we are not considering the, the larger issues involved here.
I'm going to vote yes, and I think we are going to do that thorough deliberation when we determine what the next step will be. But immediately, I agree with Mark's statement that there is harm, and this is our chance to correct that harm and start conversations, as Terry said, that, similar to what we're having tonight. So my vote is yes.
Right, and I look forward to having very thoughtful, deliberate research and discussion on it in the future.
I think it really is an opportunity to discuss both the origin and the disposition of the, of those signs and what place they ultimately have in Concord's history is, is the question before us. And specifically, that was included in the motion, is to ask the DEI Commission and the Historical Commission to collaborate, to create that.
Have you given the, the specific language of your motion to...
Our clerk hasn't.
...for the, for the minutes? So we have the whole thing?
Yes, I'll, I'll send it right over.
You will. Okay, great.
And we still want to see that report, and we also want, we are still open to receiving all the relevant information and all the different points of view about, on this subject, and we will do our best to make a sensitive decision on this matter. Thank you.
We just want to thank you on behalf of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission for taking the time tonight to listen to our report, and I think also to consider this difficult matter. And now, as Mark's motion said, we're all be an integral part of helping you with the details needed and the history needed, as Nancy would be, so that you can, but covering this up will start the conversation. That's the most important thing. Thank you for making Concord more welcoming.
Next item on the agenda is...
Town Meeting Study Committee.
With the, and actually, we're pretty, almost on time with regard to the proposal for a, a task force to consider town meeting.
Thank you. You have before you a draft article for a town meeting study committee. I don't think it's material whether we call this a committee or a task force. The charge would be the same in, the charge and the term would be the same regardless what we give it as a name. And the time is right for this, I think. It's been 30 years since we've done an in-depth, thoughtful study of open town meeting process in town. And I think that all of us are aware that there, there have been changes in our community over time. There's certainly been huge changes in technology. COVID really changed how we deal with each other in meetings and how the community gathers. And we are hearing lots of folks who are not sure that town meeting in its current form, how it, how it is, how it is carried out is really as responsive to the community needs and desires as it might be. So it seems like it's worth a considered thought process. I've suggested that we have nine registered voters of the town. The last study that was done in 1996 had seven people. The Town Governance Study Committee in 2016 had 11 people. 11 feels like perhaps a little bit unwieldy in terms of the size of, of a committee, but I will note that a specific comment that I received from the town clerk on the draft was to specifically authorize the committee to form subcommittees to carry out its work. The 1996 committee did have a number of subcommittees, as did the Town Governance Study Committee. And a membership of nine would provide a nice number for various subcommittees that could really dig their teeth into things, independent of each other, they'd be able to cover more topics. And I, I think that diversity of viewpoint is probably more important than the numbers, but I think we'll get a little greater diversity of viewpoint with nine members instead of seven. It gives, just gives us a little bit more of an option. I would say that there are a lot of ways that one could do this. The last committee that was created to study town meeting was appointed by the select board. It could happen that way again, or this could be a committee that is created by town meeting. That's the proposal that I've put in front of you because I know that you have, Henry, is it 60 boards and committees that you're currently staffing? And so I, as the moderator, I have the finance committee of 15, and I am more than happy to assist in helping to staff a committee that would study town meeting, which is, after all, squarely within my responsibility. I think that couple of other changes that I will note, I have been kind of circulating this draft in various quarters around town, and a few suggestions I have gotten, one is that we not, in, in the charge, in paragraph 1D, that we not limit the committee to looking only at that Andover Town Meeting Study Report, which was done in 2021, but rather suggest that it look at other reports by other Massachusetts towns, including that one, because there are some others out there as well. So we wouldn't want that to be limited. Let's see, there are some related documents associated with that 1996 Concord Town Meeting Study Report that should probably be included as background that the committee would review. One of the questions, I think, is what we, and this goes to schedule, the schedule for the committee, and probably also to the question whether the committee is created by town meeting or created now by the select board so that it could get started sooner. One of the questions is, what do you want it to be able to do? Do you want it to be able to bring proposals to 2025 annual town meeting for action by the town? And if you do, 12 months is probably not enough time, given how early we start the town meeting cycle, because the warrant closes in January. So if the, if the committee isn't even formed until May and the warrant closes in January, that's clearly not enough time for the committee to develop proposals that might be brought to 2025 town meeting. It would, it would have to be pushed out one more year, which might be fine. It's not that there's immediate urgency, but, but that, that does mean more of a delay if there's anything in particular that, that the committee would like to see brought to annual town meeting. Means one more.
Doesn't that depend on the kinds of changes that might be proposed?
Yes.
And if they are changes that can be implemented by you as moderator in terms of meeting procedure, the timing is not really material in that you can make those changes if you agree to make those changes. If they are changes involve amendments to the town charter, that would require action by the select board in, in terms of, isn't that right, an amendment to the town charter?
So an amendment to the charter would require special, would require action by town meeting to ask the legis... There are two different ways we can do it. Because, because our charter was formed by special legislation before the state statute for... So we can change, amend our charter by asking the legislature for special legislation to amend it, or we could go the complicated route of forming a charter commission and, and going through, that's a very lengthy and formalized process. That would be the other way to do it. But, but it works just fine for town meeting to...
And there might be other changes, such as ancillary activities, like scheduling of committee, committee meetings, and things like the order in which warrant articles are arranged, which would be for the select board, where there'd be no particular deadline because those could be things that the board could act on at any time.
Yes, yes. I quite agree with you, Henry, that, that, you know, we're, we're kind of in the happy position of our meeting here in Concord being run mostly by tradition and procedure over time. We have very few bylaws that govern how our town meeting is run on a process basis, and so we don't need to change bylaws in order to change our process at town meeting. The 1996 study made a whole series of recommendations on how to change process at town meeting, including, for example, an expanded use of the consent agenda. And we didn't need bylaw changes to implement those things. If we wanted, for example, to institute electronic voting, we do not need a bylaw change to do that. So...
If we want changes like about live broadcasting or other things...
Don't need a bylaw change for that, right. So we don't need town, which means we don't need town meeting action for that. If there were anything we wanted to do that would be, for example, doing something that we're not currently now permitted to do under state law, that would require a petition to the legislature for special legislation to permit us to do it. For example, the town of Wayland has pending a petition for special legislation to allow it, on a pilot basis, to experiment with remote voting at, at town meeting, which is currently not authorized by state statute for open town meeting. And if that were a recommendation that, that ended up being made by the committee, which was brought to town meeting as a suggestion for a petition for special legislation, and town meeting embraced it, that might be something that town meeting would wish to do. And then it would be up to the legislature whether, whether it happened or not. But, you know, that, of course, is a lengthier process, and I think if we don't appoint the committee until May, that kind of a process would be unlikely to happen before 2026 annual town meeting instead of 2025.
And I think especially what we are going to learn from the next item on the agenda, which is what the results are of presenting home rule petitions to the legislature, if we want changes to take place during our own lifetime, we may really... we want changes to take place during our own lifetime, we may really strongly favor things that can be done without action of the legislature.
Yeah. Well, and I hear that view as well. And I certainly do think that we can and should do what's within our power to make town meeting more inclusive, easier for people to attend, and a more effective process. And there probably are some things we could do.
Another comment that I would make is that you said that, I think you wanted the committee to be representative. And this is an issue that comes up with the formation of a large number of our committees. And in many cases, I think that what you may want on committees is expertise and knowledge of government and procedure and constitutional issues, and the representative function can be performed by holding hearings and taking input from the public without having to have a broad range of people on the committee who may not have the necessary knowledge or skills. But as I say, you get the representation by having public forums on the subject matter, and you have the expertise and the administrative ability among the committee members who are going to vote and write the report.
I agree with you, Henry, and I think we should follow that guidance whenever we impanel a committee. But I think actually the membership here is what you're asking for, because the members have, are going to be chosen based on experience and expertise, which is exactly what you just said. So I think...
Right. We do, I have written an article here that suggests that on the committee, there should be, and it's not every person, because you won't find the same expertise in every person, but on the committee of nine people, you should have all of this expertise represented in one or more people. So it would be a knowledge of town government structure, familiarity with Massachusetts statutes, regulating local government, a history of attendance at town meeting, knowledge of communication, voting, and remote participation technology, and familiarity with common social media platforms, because these are all ways that people are...
About wisdom and sound judgment.
Well, that goes without saying. All nine people will have that.
But this doesn't preclude people who don't attend town meetings from being on this task force, right?
No, it just means that you want some people...
Got it. Because I think you want some people who don't go.
You want to understand who's not in the room.
Right, right. You want people who don't go.
I kind of like the idea of getting started before, I feel like the time when the interest is greatest to this is during the season that runs up to town meeting. So getting this sort of kicked off, even if we just use the 2024 Town Meeting as a recruiting tool to get a full complement of nine people, there might be some advantage doing that. I do also think that it might be worth it to have something on the town meeting warrant that reinforces the mandate, because I am persuaded that the town meeting itself should be the initiator of its change process, and you, as the moderator, as the sort of referee for town meeting, should be clearly involved in that development of a plan for change.
But my comment on that is, really, the people that we want to address are the people who don't show up.
Don't show up, yeah.
Right.
And so that's very important. And I don't know how you reach into that group of people.
Well, typically, you know, if you need to do research, you got a researcher. You look at polling, surveys, interviews, you know, actually going out and calling people up, and, you know, even, I imagine that the voter registration rolls, you know, we know who shows up at town meeting, therefore, the inverse of that group is everybody who doesn't show up, and randomly select 50 of those people, and say, why didn't you, you know, actually, it's a finite group. It should be possible to really ask that question and try to understand it.
Exactly right. You don't, what we want to find out is why the people who don't show up don't.
Right.
And it's probably, I don't think it's because they don't care.
Yeah. I also think that, you know, to the structures of town meeting, four days, three, well, three days of four-hour meetings is a lot, and one wonders whether there might be some way to break down that business into more manageable chunks, because you can get, I understand that, you know, the setup is massive to try and get 1,000 or even 1,200 people, which is kind of our max. I guess 2,000 we had when we voted in one of the school budgets. That was about the top in the last 20 years. But that's a lot of people to get involved. But we do, so we need a way to be efficient with large groups and efficient with time in order to fit into people's lives, and that is very difficult.
Well, maybe...
That's what this is going to study, right? You know, to the question of whether this should be something that's sponsored by the select board or the town meeting, I'm thinking that since we're looking at how to make the legislative process in town more efficient, then that should be done by the legislative process and report to the legislators.
Yep.
So that's why, and even we might lose some time, to your point, lose some time. I think what we're saying is that many of the recommendations we'll be able to do on our own, and if the recommendations require home rule petition, that, you know, delaying one year, given that home rule petitions might, already, we know they take so long, I don't see delaying one year as being, you know, a big change to a process that we know takes years. So I'm a proponent of having it be appointed by the moderator and be impaneled and reporting to town meeting.
What, I will say, one of the other benefits that I see of bringing the formation of this study committee as an article before town meeting is it gives the meeting an opportunity to weigh in on the charge.
Right.
And it's certainly possible for folks on the floor of the meeting, or through the hearing process in advance of the meeting, to propose amendments to the charge, focuses on specific things and so forth, and, you know, perhaps that gets us a little more community involvement in the exercise, which I think would be a good thing.
So I've got another question, Carmen. At the League of Women Voters Forum, you mentioned the Andover Study.
Yes.
And in the charge I see here, it says that they review the Andover Study, right? But the thing to me that was compelling was that the conclusions, which looked at the demographics of the population in Andover, and the demographics of the people who went to town meeting, was pretty close. And I don't see that as a deliverable, I guess it's not, deliverable is not the right word. Do you think that would be appropriate to say, do that work?
We certainly could. I know that at the same forum, Scott Gillis had had a couple of slides showing the data on voting that the town clerk has kept over the past 20 years, that shows, you know, peaks and valleys and so forth, and the numbers, percentages of people who attend town meeting in local elections. But we certainly could go deeper into that. I do think that requires hiring a consultant, though, because that's a difficult volunteer work to do, and Andover did hire a consultant to do that work. So I've just kind of, I haven't asked for a budget for this committee, I've just left it here, that if they want to ask for, the hope is that we can do it on a volunteer basis and in-house, without having to spend a lot of money on it. But...
Okay.
Well, also, that raises another question, and that is, by prescribing certain materials that must be consulted, do we interfere with the committee having an open mind about what the options are? And if we require them to read the Andover Study, are we not kind of prejudicing them into accepting that result?
Yes.
And the same thing goes with our 1996 study, which is probably completely irrelevant. It's interesting, but why not just...
Yeah, but it's history. It's our history. That, I think, we can say. You got to look at our own history.
Maybe it's best to say, they should consult whatever resources they think are relevant to their work, without kind of steering them to former studies that have reached conclusions that they might be too easy to accept.
Let me ask you this, Henry. I did receive another comment kind of along those lines, that was, you know, why are we singling out one report to go read this one? Let's direct the committee to review other studies by other towns, and we can give them a, for example, of this one, and Acton, I think, has done, you know, to look at a couple of others, and just kind of see what other people have, you know, what have they chosen to look at in terms of metrics? How have they gone about doing their study? And that's, to me, more important than the conclusions, because the conclusions will be different, community by community, but the methodology may be pretty similar.
Well, it may be, but the universe has changed a lot since 1996.
Yes.
Certainly, the data has changed. And I thought those graphs that we saw at the meeting, that kind of analysis is helpful, at least in order to respond to some of the objections that people have, to how representative the attendance at the meeting is, and to see the numbers of people who turn out at town elections, where people can go to the polls, and to look at the numbers about when there are referendum items, which the state does put on the agenda, they may not be items that the town meeting specifies would be voted on by the polls, but we do get an idea of how many people vote on different questions. And who votes on presidential and congressional elections, and to draw some of those comparisons based on current data, because I think things have changed a lot.
Yes, absolutely.
And a lot of it has to do with the internet and communication and the...
And modern life.
And modern life, yes, if it's called that. And so maybe we ought to really encourage them to go and get fresh data anyway, even if it costs us money.
Wow, okay. It sounds like that's a specific suggestion, that maybe we include in here a direction to do a data analysis of comparing the cross-section of people in the community who come to town meeting and who vote at the polls in local elections with the composition of the community at large, to see what that looks like.
And if funding is required, that they will come back to us and talk to us about finding the money to do what needs to be done.
Wouldn't it be the town manager?
If it's within the town manager's...
Right, because we don't have any money.
We don't have any money.
Really would be the town manager.
There's probably an opportunity to add the funding or some placeholder for funding to the town meeting budget line item that...
Or ARPA funds.
Okay, well, the town manager can figure that out.
That's right. The town manager can figure that out.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I thought, Carmen, you mentioned in the beginning something about the ability to have subcommittees?
Yes.
And I'm trying to figure out, which section is that in?
Well, it's not there at the moment, and where it would go is, you'll see the charge on the first page, and we would add as a last line, the committee may form subcommittees to carry out its work.
Before number one, you mean?
Yeah.
Right, okay, good. And then...
Subcommittees of its own members.
Yes.
Right, okay. And then another question I have is at the end, the committee will be dissolved one month following the conclusion of the town meeting. I think we talked about this when you and I...
Yeah, and I had a couple of suggestions that there might be reasons to keep that committee hanging around a little longer, in which case, maybe we put in a catch-all that says, we could add there at the end of that sentence, or at such other time as the moderator may direct, so that you could give the...
Yeah, it could be extended by the moderator, right. And then another thing that was brought up tonight was the real important need to talk to people who don't come to town meeting. So I suggest that we add that either in item number two, like it's a topic, or in item number three, seeking public input. This is a specific group that we want to make sure they talk to.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, and then I want to, so I think I don't need a vote from you. I'm hearing a consensus that we should move forward with this, and that I should finalize this draft and turn it in as a draft warrant article.
Sponsored by you.
It can be sponsored by me, and what I will do is step down, and the deputy moderator will preside while this article is discussed by town meeting, and I can present the article to town meeting, that's fine. But just a couple of other things I wanted to note. You know, I'd been thinking about it, and it was recently suggested to me that, and I know that other towns have been experimenting with this a little bit. One question is whether we should have an additional venue in West Concord for people to come to town meeting. So, for example, have a session at, a simultaneous session at Harvey Wheeler, where it's walking distance from a lot of people in West Concord, there's, you know, or the alternative would be the Thoreau School, I'm not sure which one has better capacity. And, but the Harvey Wheeler is the senior center, a lot of people are comfortable there. And I've just begun the conversation with town staff and the town clerk's office about the feasibility from a staff cost and logistical perspective of doing that. And if it looks doable, it might be something we want to experiment with this year. One issue would be, what do we do if we run out of space at Harvey Wheeler, and you've got, you know, the meeting has started, do you tell people that, oh, you're going to get the car and drive to the high school? But, you know, things like that, that we would have to sort out. But I'd be interested, I know this is not on your agenda, but I'm just kind of interested in your reaction of...
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay.
Very interesting idea. I mean, because if we can have it in two different rooms at the high school, the only difference is that the, you know, the electronic features, you know?
Right.
Having effective communications, which we need to improve remarkably anyway, without regard to this specific issue. And then also the very fancy electronic equipment with the projections and the screens and the simultaneous translate, all that stuff, which, all that paraphernalia, which I think if we wanted to make the meeting more congenial and welcoming, might be a move in the right direction to minimize the electronic element anyway. But that's for the committee to think about.
All right. The other question that I will raise is electronic voting. You know, this is a thing, you know, we could do it again if we wanted to. We did it once for one day, and, you know, I'm hearing both sides of this from voters, some people who say, we want electronic voting, and other people who say... and other people who say, you know, a pox on you if you bring electronic voting to town meeting. So I'm not sure what you think about that. Maybe we wait for the study on that? Or maybe we try it for one night of town meeting?
Well, there are two sides to that one.
Indeed, there are.
Well, I mean, there are two issues there. One is the convenience and efficiency issue. The other is the extent to which we want to concede that the social pressure of seeing how your friends vote is useful or is inhibiting.
Right.
And there are people who feel that community involves standing up and publicly stating what you believe in, regardless of who sees you vote that way. And there are other people who feel that that inhibits, you know, truthful voting. And that's a very, very important issue that has nothing to do with convenience.
Right. And the convenience really only comes into play when we have a counted vote because electronic voting is not any faster than raising ballots. You know, if we raise ballots and I can see what the vote is, that's just as quick as doing an electronic vote. The count is slow. Then the count takes us 15 to 20 minutes. And we can do it in under five minutes. Actually, we can do it in probably two minutes with electronic voting if we need to count.
And that would avoid, using it for just that would avoid the issue that Henry brought up.
My recollection is that electronic voting was actually slowing us down on those routine votes.
Right.
Because people didn't know how to use it.
For the few that we need it, I would say there's no way that we get done with a counted vote, a paper ballot vote in 15, 20 minutes. Usually takes maybe 45 minutes. You have to, you know.
Oh, that's if we had a paper ballot vote, yes. But when we do a standing counted vote.
Oh, I see, I see.
That when you do a standing counted vote, that takes us 15 or 20.
But there's very few of them, so anyway.
Yeah, I think we had two at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but sometimes trouble is a useful, what can I say, deterrent to, you know, frivolous objection. So and so that sometimes making things a little bit difficult really helps people be more serious about what they're asking for.
Okay. Thank you very much for considering this. I really appreciate your input. And I will be back as we're closer to the warrant opening with another draft.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe the only thing left on the agenda is the schedule for our meetings between
No, we have to track the home rule petitions with Chris Carmody.
Yes, thank you. Do we have
I want to hear.
Yes. Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, highest flight board members. Just good to see you. Thank you for allowing me to present it virtually. And I know we're at the end of the meeting, so I'll be quick. So in your packet on page 48 is the legislative update. The town manager has instructed me to monitor home rule petitions and other state and federal legislation that impacts Concord. It's a large portfolio. This particular legislative update is really tailored to home rule petitions. You'll see that there are six that are mentioned. There's actually five home rule petitions and one one funding request that Senator Barrett proposed earlier this year and was essentially gutted. And Representative Ciccollo from Lexington has reintroduced. So I'll just do a quick tour through. Town meeting approved the real estate transfer fee and that the building permit fee as bookends to dedicate funds to the municipal affordable housing trust. Those were introduced as bills on Beacon Hill by Representative Cataldo, H2730 and H2729. As memo states, we were invited to present testimony on October 11, 2023 on the real estate transfer fee, along with many other municipalities in Massachusetts that are interested in this legislation, including the city of Boston. This particular issue has got the attention of the governor. She has included this policy issue in her housing bond bill that she released recently. That housing bond bill is a gigantic legislation and will go through several committees. So we would expect to see that reviewed in a series of different legislative committees over the next 10 months, with hopefully some conclusions to the debate on that by the end of June. Other legislative issues, there's the fossil fuel infrastructure ban. The town approved this at town meeting for new construction. We actually have two mechanisms for this authorization. We've got a home rule petition that was filed as 2038 to reflect the will of town meeting. And there's a separate executive pilot program that former Governor Baker introduced. And Governor Healy has basically reauthorized Concord's one of 10 pilot communities that intend to participate in this program. I know that Director Sustainability has closely been following this and working on the pilot program and working with the staff at the OER to ensure that Concord can join that group.
Chris, can I interrupt you for a minute? On this fossil-free building. So right now in Concord, if someone wants to build a building after January 1 of 2024, what authority do we have to ensure that it is in fact fossil fuel-free? If any?
Yeah, I don't, right, that's an excellent question. So legislatively, we have none. In terms of the executive program, I believe that D O E R is right now going through and verifying that each pilot community has submitted everything they need to do. And I am not exactly clear on when that particular program would go into effect. It's, there is some talk about January 1, 2024, but I would need to verify that with the Director Sustainability and D O E R to see. They're a little behind on developing this pilot program, so.
Well, that would be important, Chris, to find out because that did come up on a recent sidewalk about one of the Chapter 40B projects. They did not seem aware of this. And then, so we were not sure if it was an absolute requirement yet or not. And it'll be important to find out.
And I know Eric Sims is working on this. And I guess the related question to that would be, January 1, what has to occur after January 1? The building permit, the, you know, what exactly, what does that date mean? Is it, if the permit is issued before that, is that property exempt? Or so that's another
Right, so I, yeah, so I think it would, my understanding is that it would be executive legislative, executive regulations that would allow Concord to basically update its building permit application to include the regulation of fossil fuels on that application.
Okay, but right now, we're kind of, we have nothing under us right now.
It'd be the specialized stretch code for January 1. But they haven't finalized this.
That's the pilot program?
No, the specialized stretch code was approved by town meeting last year. It's a stricter
I know, but it's a home rule petition.
No, but that's different from the building code.
Okay, wait, we're
Yeah, so
I'm sorry.
Town opted, so taking away, pausing for a second on this legislative piece, there is a specialized stretch code, which is what Concord has opted into that has additional requirements for buildings, that is more above and beyond standard building code.
Okay.
And so that goes into effect on January 1. So any building permit after January 1 will have to adhere to the new specialized stretch code. For this, for this pilot program, they have not, they're still working on it at the state. They're asking for more information from the, some of the communities that have participated. They're reviewing what we've submitted. I have to confirm with Eric, but it doesn't seem like they are probably comfortable having a date that, yes, we're going to be all set at this time. They're still reviewing.
Okay, so, but the specialized energy stretch code is different than the pilot program is even more stringent than
Correct.
Okay, and that's the one where we're not sure what the timing is. But the specialized energy stretch code will be in effect on January 1.
Yes.
And we're not waiting for a home rule petition to be, so that, good. We can go to the bank with that on January 1.
That doesn't, that is not a full fossil-free
It's not fossil.
What is it?
It's below that. I guess in the sustainability, the most sustainable is this pilot program. Then under that is the specialized stretch code.
Okay.
So it is, it is the tool, it is the tool that we have that is the most sustainable tool that we've opted into, that we have the ability to use.
Okay.
And that is
That's available, got it.
Yeah, that's what's available. And this other one is still in progress. And as soon as we have more information about when it will roll out and when we're good to go, we'll keep you posted. But it's, since it's a pilot, it's still developing. And we're working closely with the state to make sure they have all of our information so that they can kind of proceed with this.
But yeah, I just want to echo what Terry said earlier. What I'm really interested in is how this applies to the 40B up on Thoreau. Yeah.
Hey, Mary, so there's really kind of two reasons for the delay in the rollout of the pilot program. One is it occurred during a transition in governors. And there was an assessment by the current governor about whether they were going to endorse that program. And the second was the enormous amount of work that Governor Healy has done on affordable housing. And there is, I think, a pretty healthy debate going on, which I'm not part of on Beacon Hill, about the intersection of sustainability and affordable housing.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good point. And you know what? Thank you for saying that, Chris. Now I'm remembering my conversation with Eric earlier. And the affordable housing component, since that's what you're specifically asking about how that intersects with
Right.
these, both of these programs. I want to make sure I have the right information. So I apologize for maybe jumping too quickly on that because there is a nuance there that I want to make sure.
And I'm also remembering, that same day, Mary, I talked with the woman from Mass Housing.
Yep.
And she said that we should make sure, this will come up next meeting, okay? When we write our comment letter, we want to include these comments because the developer didn't seem to know anything about it.
You're right, he didn't.
Right, so we want to make sure that Mass Housing knows that we're paying attention and that that's one of our comments.
And I'd like to, before we come up with that letter, I'd like to get a better understanding of, you know, what we have available to us.
Yes.
And if it only applies, if it doesn't apply to affordable, does that mean that out of this development, 25% of it gets a pass on the specialized and the other 75% has to comply? You see, there's just, you know, there's anyways.
I believe there's an, yeah, I'll find out the details.
Good, thank you. Okay, that was my interest in this. But I think this table is great, Chris. Thank you for putting this together.
Oh, sure. So if I could just maybe finish up, just by talking about two more, two more pieces or three more pieces of legislation. So I also wanted, wanted to thank Henry for testifying on Beacon Hill. He gave some really beautiful remarks on October 16, when he joined a panel with Representative Cataldo, Fred Ryan, Dr. Monroe on funding for the 250th. So that, again, that bill was introduced by Senator Barrett last session. It's going to dedicate $1 million for Concord and Lexington for public safety. Those needs still exist. When that bill went to conference committee, all, many other cities in town, Massachusetts were like, we also stand to be impacted by this, the logistics of this anniversary. And it shouldn't be reserved for Concord and Lexington. And that's ultimately what happened with the budget bill. So that Concord and Lexington were removed. And the funding was basically dedicated to mass offensive travel and tourism. And so the bill has been reintroduced essentially by Representative Ciccollo for fiscal year '25. That'll start July 1, 2024. And we will see how this, if this takes a different legislative result. We are pressing hard. And I spoke with Senator Barrett on Friday about coupling the support for tourism with the public safety support that's required to have that tourism occur safely. They're different sides of the same coin. And the state should really not be, should not be so short-sighted to fund one over the other. And so that debate is continuing. And then there's two other bills. There's a bill on right choice voting, which has been languishing a little bit in the legislature. And then there's a checkout bag fee of 10 cents. This is the home rule authorization. The Beacon Hill held a hearing on June 20, 2023. And there's a lot of other cities and towns that are interested in this that have also passed this home rule legislation. And they're interested in moving forward. There is, just so you know, there is an interest by the agriculture committee to revise this home rule petition a little bit, provide an exemption for farms in Concord because there are many that it's not really logistically possible to do a separate sale for a bag at a farm stand. So there's some discussion about that. And we anticipate the agricultural committee presenting a warrant article this year to present at annual town meeting to revise that home rule petition slightly. I did also just want to put it on your radar. We are tracking very closely, which our director of public works, Alan Kathgart, has studied extensively, that PFAS litigation that is bubbling around the country right now. This impacts the town both as a plaintiff and as a defendant. And the town is looking at a settlement class that involves 3M and DuPont. We'll have more to share with you on that in the next month or two. But it's a gigantic settlement. I think it's, I think it's $15 billion for 3M and something like $10 billion by DuPont. They're massive settlements. Concord's already, is kind of pre-listed as a possible litigant. And we've talked to town council about it. And we've started to have these conversations with the town manager and town council to flesh out what it would mean to join that settlement action. So that's my, that's my update.
Thank you.
I guess I had one other question. I thought I had understood from Representative Cataldo that he was now interested in pressing forward on work on the Rotary at some point. Is there any legislation attached to that that we're aware of?
I haven't seen any legislation on that, Mark, but thank you. I will look into that and get back to you.
Okay, I believe he made some comments about that at the
Twice.
At the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail.
My impression was it would go through that tip process, not
That might have been what he was talking, yeah.
But I don't think it's on any radar anywhere.
Yeah.
Upgrading Route 2 has been a project that goes back to the mid-'60s.
Yeah.
Before we were born.
Before some of us were born.
Before our current representative was born, anyway.
On that note, I did want to just do a special shout out to Representative Well, on that note, I did want to just do a special shout out to Representative Cataldo, Representative Gentile, and Senator Barrett. They've all been so accessible and responsive to our needs. And I, I, it is worth kind of reminding you and the citizens, citizens of Concord that there was a lot of angst when Concord was split into two legislative districts, and what we've seen is quite the opposite. When one representative is busy, the other one can fill in, and I've seen that in Beacon Hill. So they have been working together well and have been serving Concord's interests well. So I think that it's, it's been good to see, good to see so far.
No, I think it worked, it turned out very well for us to have two representatives now instead of one.
Yes, that's a good point. That's a good point.
That's right. Good to know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So is there any other questions? I, also, if, I obviously am available anytime to help write any letters from the legislature or the governor or the executive agencies that, that any of you request.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
You can go back to work now. All right.
Okay. Approve the, I mean, review the calendar.
Yeah. I asked Shannon to put this together, taking into account the town moderator's schedule for town meeting and other various items that we had to put in, into account. The only thing I think that needs to be added to this calendar is the date on which the warrant closes.
I had a couple of comments and questions on, on the proposed calendar, if I might. I was wondering whether it might be possible to do without the January 2 meeting. That's a Tuesday meeting, which is always a little, you know, creates a short week, and we are meeting on the 18th of, anyway, and there's only really 12 business days between that and the January 8 meeting, when we vote the articles anyway. So it seemed like that was a lot of meetings coming right after New Year's Day. It just seemed like it might not be necessary for us to.
Is there anything that we need to do?
If we're sponsoring an article, that's the only thing that occurs to me.
Because it's right before the warrant closes.
It closes on the 3rd. The warrant closes on the 3rd. Yep. At 4:00 PM.
Well, if the warrant closes on the 3rd, I think it's important that we have a meeting, at least potentially, to.
Right.
Yeah.
We can just cancel it. If, you know, maybe we'll finish by December 18.
That's right.
And if we don't, then, you know, we'll have that.
Yeah, just wanted to raise the question. Another question is, the January 29th that's listed as the town caucus, I assume that's a regular meeting as well?
No, is it? The caucus is not a meeting.
That's how it was held last year. Well, so last year, I remember the select board had a typical meeting scheduled, you adjourned for maybe 30 minutes for the caucus and then returned to a standard meeting.
Right, that's right.
It's much more convenient to just get here and.
Yes.
Have our meeting the same night, especially in the winter when the weather's bad and everything.
Yeah. That made sense to me. It just, it's not published this way. It looks like maybe we're just showing up for the caucus and it's not a regular meeting. So if we're going to put the schedule out, it might make sense to.
Yeah, this was more just for our notes, but I can make that clear.
And then the other one that, sort of along the same vein, the February 26 meeting, it seemed to me that trying to hold a regular meeting on the same night that we're holding hearing for however many articles we're also sponsoring, seemed like a very long evening, and maybe we would want to consider doing something like having a meeting on, on the week before that, or adjusting the February schedule such that we're having a hearing and a meeting on a different night.
Well, if we are all going to be present at the hearing on the, at the public hearing, we may need to notice it anyway.
Yeah, we would have to notice it anyway, but I'm just wondering whether we would want to have a two-hour agenda in addition to however long the public hearing goes for the town meeting articles.
Well, first I was thinking, just cancel it and move it to another day, but now I'm remembering that we meet at 6:00, and the public hearing is probably at 7:00. So maybe if we just have a little bit of business that night.
Yeah.
And we don't know that yet.
Right, I just, those were just some things that it seemed to me we, we'd want to kind of clarify how we were, how we were planning to do it, because February 5 to March 4, that's a whole month. In fact, in fact, what we're really doing is we're starting almost a weekly cadence starting at the 26th, so, you know, maybe we, I know there's a holiday in February too. I think the 19th is a holiday.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I think as we approach town meeting, we may be forced to have more frequent, more frequent meetings.
Yes. I agree. Yep.
Understood.
I agree.
I was just.
We've been, we've been enjoying the leisure.
Yeah, we have.
What I was, what I was really getting at was, there's likely to be a backlog of business if the last time we meet before the 26th is the 5th. And so we kind of set ourselves up for the 26th is going to be, we're going to be trying to have a short meeting because there's a, there's a town meeting hearing associated with it, yet it's been three weeks since we met. So that usually doesn't lend itself to a short meeting.
Well, if you leave it to me, we will have a short meeting.
I, I know. You have your ways.
Well, one, one thing, Mark.
They're not short enough.
So you're suggesting February 12?
Possibly. I mean, I, this, I, I really only gave this a sort of a cursory look, but I was kind of looking for those kinds of concerns.
Well, one thing, Mark, it hasn't happened this year, but the first couple of years I was on the committee, on the select board, extra meetings were added.
Yeah.
A lot for executive session or, or other matters that came up. So the calendar that we have now is our best guess, knowing that things could still change.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And this also for, it also, because we now have this, the, the schedule of dates by which we want people to submit materials for meetings and dates on which we want the agendas to go out, it's, it sets up the framework.
So what are we deciding? Wait and see about February? Put a placeholder for February 12?
If we're going to meet on the town caucus night, which is the 29th of January, a week later is February 5. And then we're not meeting on the 12th. The 19th is a holiday and the 26th, so maybe we should.
Three weeks.
Do something like move the 5th to the 12th to set ourselves up better so that we only have two weeks' worth of work to do on the 26th, and that avoids the holiday.
That's a good idea.
Unless Shannon is about to tell me.
The only reason I did that was because.
That's my fault. I had written Shannon that I'm going to be away that week, but you guys are free to meet without me. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I was just, maybe, you know, so I was looking for anomalies of that kind, and I found one.
So we want to make it to 12th and no meeting on the January 29?
No.
Well, no, so if we meet on the 29th, then we meet again on the 12th, then we're meeting every other week.
Okay.
Which is kind of our normal schedule.
Take off the 5th and add the 12th.
And then, then we can probably get away with a short meeting ahead of the public hearing on the 26th.
Okay. Got that, Shannon?
I got it.
Okay.
All right.
Let her rip.
Got it.
Is it too early to adjourn?
Nope. Move to adjourn at 9:00. Whoop, you have a public comment.
Public comment at the end of the session.
He wants to do public comments.
We had public comments at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, then you'll miss it.
Oh.
You'll see your loss.
Well, I hope not. Can you be brief?
Decidedly.
As long as you sat through the whole thing. I think you actually got a nap, didn't you, while you were waiting?
Wouldn't it have been so nice? David Allen, 316, East Bridge Road, as most folks know, standing between us and, in my case, dinner, so brief. Notice an implication going back in the conversation to the end over study. What they concluded was that their town meeting was representative. And should we do such a study here and discover that our town meeting is representative? Then all those concerns about too few people at town meeting, they basically go away, which would be a great thing, of course, and then, of course, it might not turn out that way. I'll notice there, hopefully there'll be another discussion of these topics later, a discussion of our standard recounted culture versus anonymous electronic voting will be worthy to inspect, but later for that. Final observation, I was shocked sitting here that my own life came into the DEI discussion. You're proceeding on well-established precedent. That little red brick schoolhouse in Cambridge, where I went 60 years ago as an Indiana schoolboy, I lived in this very fancy building that had been built early 20th century for the sons of the Brahmins. The entry that I walked through for three years had some of these hurtful statues in them. What did the little red brick schoolhouse figure out what to do? Took them three or four years to finally do something, but they covered up the statues. Congratulations, in my view, to your excellent choice in that situation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for waiting. And now, are we, is it?
Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn at 9:03 PM.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.